We will do that. We're ready, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we are ready.
Okay, everyone, welcome to the Tuesday, November 16th council meeting. Roll call, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Eighteenth, did I say sixteen? Eighteenth. Thank you, thank you, good, great. Keep me on.
Mayor Gilman. Here, here. Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Meng.
Here.
We have Councilmember Rule participating remotely, she's not logged on yet, and Councilmember Whitman is on his way.
Thank you very much. And pledge of allegiance, please, Mr. Montgomery.
Honorable council, mayor, community, please rise as you are able. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
Yeah, any objections? Nope, okay, great, we'll proceed. And we have a presentation, the city provided partnership with AgroMan, providing soil and compost to community members. Yay.
Thank you, honorable mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. My name is Jackie Rojas, and I am in the Public Works Department as admin analyst two. So it is my pleasure to open this presentation tonight and highlight a new program that reflects Ojai's ongoing commitment to sustainability and environmental stewardship. As many of you know, the city of Ojai has been working diligently to expand sustainable resources and climate-friendly programs to our residents. One of the most impactful ways we're doing that is through our partnership with AgroMan, California's leading organics recycler and a longtime advocate for a healthier, more resilient communities. Tonight, we're excited to officially introduce the Free Mulch and Compost Program. Through this partnership, Ojai residents will now have access to free bulk mulch, free bulk compost, and for the very first time in Ventura County, free bagged compost. We're proud that Ojai is the pilot city for this expanded offering, and we appreciate AgroMan's collaboration to provide this for our community. We also ordered a large pallet of four-quart bags of compost, so be on the lookout for those, as we may be handing them out at various city events, or even hand them out if you want to come and say hi to our wonderful staff and public works. This program is more than just a resource to our community, it also helps us meet our requirements under SB 1383. This is the state's mandate to reduce organic waste going to landfills. And more importantly, this entire effort is fully funded through CalRecycle's grant, meaning the cost to the city is net zero. The program will operate through a coupon-based system on AgroMan's online ordering system, with eligibility extended to all Ojai residents and businesses located within the city limits. The program officially launches tomorrow, and all coupon and ordering information will be posted on our website, so residents can begin placing their orders right away. I also want to acknowledge our Public Works team, who has been working closely and diligently with AgroMan for quite some time, to shape this program into something that truly benefits our community. We anticipate the program will be very popular, therefore, the remainder of the CalRecycle grant will be set aside to support this program the remainder of this year and throughout the next calendar year. While we have not yet received word on the grant funding beyond that timeframe, we will be exploring opportunities to continue supporting this program as part of our next fiscal year budget discussions. So with that, it is my pleasure to introduce the Executive Vice President of Sales and Marketing for AgroMan, Cody Kane, who will walk you through the program details and share how residents can take advantage of this program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Jackie, that introduction. There's not much to follow up on her, she pretty much, you know, covered it all. But let me try and share my screen here. And bear with me until we get just everything, what this should act like. So I'm going to share this, okay.
Yep, we see it.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm going to try something else here, and try and... Presentation mode. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I will just start with this, that should work. Oh, wait, you're seeing the wrong screen now, hold on. This is what I mean, sometimes this likes to... I'm going to stop sharing and start again. Stop. All right, let's try this again. You should see... Let's do it again, stop here. Okay, this is the screen, now let's see. It doesn't work.
That's your presentation, yeah?
You can see the presentation?
Yeah.
City of Ojai?
Yeah.
It's not showing me that, there we go, it took a while. Okay, so let me run through this with you. I'm not going to put in presentation mode because it takes over two screens for me, and I want to make sure I get this right, so this should be clear enough. So as Jackie had mentioned, we've been working with the Public Works Department for many months to come up with a bespoke program that is unique to the city of Ojai. As you all well know, the city of Ojai is a unique town, and it's in a unique location with a unique geography and unique, you know, residents. So from that point of view, we wanted to build something that we thought reflected, you know, the residents of the city and gave them an opportunity to benefit from the SB 1383 program that has been mandated by CalRecycle. So let me just go into a little bit more detail about what the program is. So it is, again, what Jackie said, a constituent compost and mulch giveaway program. We've been running this now for a number of years in the county, the first was the city of Ventura, and it's now expanded to the city, the county of Ventura, Fillmore, Camarillo, Oxnard, Santa Clarita, and then we're also working up north as well. So it's a very popular program, and the bag program has proven to be exceptionally popular. So I'm really excited for the city of Ojai to be able to, you know, participate in the bags. First city in the county, as Jackie alluded to, so congratulations on that front. So let me just talk you a little bit more through this. So what is the, you know, compost and mulch giveaway program? Basically, collaboration between Ojai and AgroMan, and also AquaFlow. So AquaFlow is a distribution partner for us, and so they're, you know, in the city, so it makes it a lot easier for residents to collect material locally, as opposed to having to shoot down the hill to our AgroMan facilities there. Provides, so we're providing free, high-quality compost and mulch to the residents and businesses of the city. As Jackie said, this helps the city to meet SB 1383 procurement mandates for organic waste diversion and greenhouse gas reductions. So our product is very highly rated, there's really nothing else that we can qualify for. We're Armory Listed Title 14 compliant, certified by the CDFAs, US Composting Council, the LGMA, and we're being used on farms all across the state currently. We're made from 100% recycled green waste, it's free of biosolids and any animal material or byproducts. So it's very important for us, because that maintains our Armory Listing, and there's a lot of regulations around biosolids and animal, you know, byproducts, so we steer clear of that to just have a clean, green product. So the coupon details are basically, as mentioned, bagged compost 100, bulk compost 100, and bulk cover mulch. We don't have bagged cover mulch because CDFA hasn't yet approved our bags. So soon in the future, we're hoping, if we can ever get it through their strict processes, we will see a cover mulch bag product. So, and again, mentioned, the first time anybody in the county has worked with us on distributing bags, so this will be exciting. So the coupon parameters are valid from tomorrow through the end of the year. We're actually, you know, the idea is we'll have an ongoing coupon program that won't stop, you know, obviously, should the funding be available, and we'll just change the coupon code come January 1st, and so then a new code would be used for 2026. So we want, it's a short period of time, as you can appreciate, November 19th through the end of the year. Not a bad time to be planting in Ojai, coincidentally, so that's a good time for us to be making products available. So it'll give us, it's a pilot, you know, you get to see how it works, we get to see how it's working in the city and our relationship with AquaFlow, and, you know, if there's any feedback, we want to get that. We want this to be a home run for the city of Ojai, and we think we know how to do that, and we've done it multiple places already, and so we're looking forward to being able to do that with the city. And so essentially, the use will be per residence, now not, we actually made a mistake earlier, and we had resident, and then we found that there were some loopholes there, and people started, a lot of people lived in one location all of a sudden. So we started, you know, figure out things as we went, but this, you know, gives us a great opportunity through our program, shop.agroMan.com, our platform, we can track all orders. So per residence, they get one use, and they get up to five bags of compost per order. So that means one off, they can take five bags, or one bag, it's entirely up to you, to them. They would then go to AquaFlow in the city to get the bags. If they really want to come down to AgroMan to collect the bags, we have them there too, and we can do that. But it would probably be a lot easier for the residents to be able to collect it at AquaFlow, which is why we set up that arrangement. If they want to get bulk material, they can have two uses of the coupon code and up to 15 yards of compost per use. So that is a full, basically, bobtail truck for us. They don't have to take that much, they can take a lesser amount if they so desire, but we want to give them the opportunity to maximize the use. We found that when we expanded the volumes available to residents, they took advantage of it in previous programs, so we wanted to make sure that they're, we're not shortchanging those who want to take advantage of the access to the material. So again, this is for a residence, a single physical location, so one coupon use per address. The coupon program details, and compost bags can be picked up at AquaFlow at 1940 East Ojai Avenue, and again, bulk compost and mulch can be picked up at 201 Kinetik Drive in Oxnard. Any deliveries that go into the city is a flat rate of $270. I know it's a little bit painful, but it is difficult to get up into Ojai with trucks and so on. So we've, that's really a reduced rate to guarantee, but it is borne by the residents. So if they want to bring the material in, then they pay for the delivery, it's not something the city would pay for. The city would just cover the cost of the materials. So how does a resident order? Well, first of all, they're going to find the information at your city website, I'm not going to, you know, repeat that, you can see it. Then they'll follow the instructions and place their order on our website, which is shop.agroMan.com. And they will be required to register themselves in there, so that we can identify each individual who uses the coupon code, so that's, you know, tallied at the end of the month, and you will see that, and exactly which resident purchased, how much they purchased, and where the material went to. We will confirm the address of every resident that places an order. And so we've set up an automated system, because it became very complicated with lots of systems going on simultaneously, we couldn't manually do it for each city, so we've now set up a GPS coordinate system where it will tag every address that comes in and check it to see which compost program it qualifies for. So that's something we've done to improve our systems, to make it a lot easier for the residents to kind of know quickly whether they qualify for one or another of coupon codes. We've got lots of them in the county going right now, so for that reason, it's important that we always make sure that the resident knows where they live, because sometimes residents think they're in a city, but they're in the county, or vice versa, just because their address says one thing, they think one thing without knowing that they're not in the place they think they are. So we sometimes have to manage that, but there are lots of other programs in the county, so we can often point them to an existing program if it's still running. Let's see, that pretty much covers everything on my presentation, so I want to open this up to questions. If anybody has anything about AgroMan, about the program, about anything specific, please open it up.
Thank you. I was thinking, this could go in the Ojai Outlook, possibly, right? Some link there to let folks know about it?
We could shoehorn that in, yes, absolutely.
And yeah, go, please.
So is this, I toured the Harrison facilities and saw them taking the bags, the plastic bags with organic waste out. Is this connected to that operation?
In a sense, I don't know if you're familiar, we recently opened the Mountain View food waste processing facility in Oxnard, and that's the only one that exists in the county. And so we're basically taking, we're going to be taking all the food waste from the Harrisons, and we're still arranging private contracts with different haulers and private food production entities that are going to bring their food waste to us. But yes, we do work with the Harrisons very closely, we provide a lot of their organics management, so they will do some diversion at their location, and then they will send the food waste, will either go to Simi Valley, which is then sent up into Kern County, but now with the option of Oxnard, we'll be able to redirect a lot of that food waste to our facility.
Excellent, thank you so much, this is very exciting.
Yes, it's great.
You know, organic waste is such a huge contributor to methane gas and to the warming climate, so this is great to see that we are going to be the first city in the county that is receiving the benefits of this win-win operation.
Thank you very much, any questions? No, that's wonderful, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to seeing a successful program moving forward.
Absolutely. All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wonderful, all right, city managers report, please.
Yes, Mayor, a couple things this evening. First, I'd like to call Ms. Leah Palmer up to the podium, start things off, if I could. Give her a moment to come on up. So Leah is our new accounting manager, she joined us, I think, last week?
Yeah.
Okay, great, let me just read to you a little bit about Leah. So she brings, with her 10 years of accounting experience, she began her career in the private sector, where she learned the cornerstone accounting functions of accounts payable, accounts receivable, and treasury management, and from there, she moved into public accounting, where she has had the opportunity to work on payroll, budgeting, grant management, audits, and the annual comprehensive financial report. Leah holds a Bachelor of Science in Business with an emphasis in business management from Cal State Northridge. Leah is dedicated to ensuring the accuracy and integrity of financial records, adhering to government-specific regulations, and compliance and accountability in the use of taxpayer funds. All exciting stuff. Thank you, Leah, we're super excited to have you join us. Anything you want to say while you're up there?
Just thank you for having me, I'm really excited to join the team and get to work with everybody.
Thank you.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you, Leah, welcome.
Thanks.
Next, I think I want to kick it to the clerk to talk about our board vacancies and our appointment process. Mr. Montgomery?
I'd just like to start by saying, from the city clerk's office seat here, we had a minor error, that's why the community and council are missing two councilmembers right now, and we just had one mistake on our time on our printed binders, and it shows the importance of printed binders, and also how one small mistake can have a big impact relating to our community. So we understand that, and we will always improve going forward.
Cool.
So, city commissions, we have a lot of commission vacancies, there are three in total, which is a big deal, Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and Arts Commission. We have conducted outreach through advertising the Ojai Valley News, social media outreach, and our city commission vacancies webpage. So all the clerk's offices' webpages are up to date, and you can always, any interested community member can always go to our city website. So, a little rundown, Planning Commission received no new applications in this process, but I would have to say for the record, Mr. Steingold did apply again, he would call me out on that, jokingly. So there are four applications on file there. Historic Preservation has one new application on file for total, and Arts Commission has two new applications on file, and two new and only two on file. So thank you to councilmembers and mayor for the footwork there on getting some, you know, dedicated volunteers to serve on commissions. Last report, there was council action for a regional board to, for the area Housing Authority, AHA. We re-noticed that in the newspaper, and there were no new applications on that, and we intend to bring Mr. Steve Mason up for reappointment, since there are no more applications, and we intend to get that on our December 9th agenda.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Thanks.
Two more brief things, just with the recent rain event, I just want to extend my thanks to the Public Works Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Ventura County Fire Department, who were all very busy over the weekend. I know, I live on the east end, and at my house, last time I checked, it was something like almost eight inches over the last several days, so it's just crazy. So thank you for all the work from our crews and teams. And then lastly, for those interested in anything related to the Ojai Permit Supportive Housing Project, the bid package was posted on our website on November 7th, 2025, so that's on our landing page. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Now, what's not on the addenda, but what should be, would be Commissioner Reports, and we have Commissioner Wright for the Arts Commission to give us a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Mayor Gilman, Mayor Protem Lang, City Councilmember Meng? Meng and Lang.
I know, right?
City staff, the community here, thank you for this opportunity to update you on the Arts Commission. For our meeting, which is on this Thursday, the Arts Commission is scheduled to receive the Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendations for grant awards. The Arts Commission will review and vote on each applicant's proposal and finalize the award amounts that night, and this will be the completion of the 2026 grant cycle. From there, we will send our recommendations to you, the city council, ASAP for your approval, and of course, we're hoping they'll appear on a very soon agenda, we'll see. We had 28 grant applications, which was nearly double from last year, and that includes individuals and organizations across many artistic disciplines, including dance, film, theater, fine art, music. I'm sure this is because of the increased budget from $30,000 to $100,000. So once again, thank you so much, as somebody would say, for the raise. And you're all invited, and you're all invited to attend the meeting on Thursday. You can see firsthand our hard work and careful consideration of each of the grant proposals. With the grants behind us, we will move on to updating our five-year plan, something that's required of arts commissions. Under the leadership of Chair West, we will focus on the following key issues. Collaborating with Ojai Chamber of Commerce on a study for creative and economy impact. Continuing our assessment and maintenance of our public art collection. Assessing the methodology and calculation the city uses to calculate the percent for the arts. Expanding our education and mentorship programs for creative professionals and aspiring artists. And cultivating and bringing on new commissioners, sounds like we have a couple applicants, so that'll be moving along. So thank you for your time this evening, and I hope to see at least some of you this Thursday, 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, at the chamber, the city chambers.
Any questions? Good work, loving it, loving it, thanks. I have no public comment cards, Mr. Montgomery? Yes?
One moment, let's ensure...
I have some for items.
Let's just tell, we have one Zoom participant, and I'm speaking to our Zoom participant, we are entering our general public comment period. Just give you an opportunity to raise your hand in our hybrid model. Mayor, it looks like we can move on, thank you.
Wonderful, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull any items from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item number seven, I have a question about it.
Okay.
I have a question with five and seven, it's...
Okay, five and seven.
But I'll move to approve the rest of them?
Okay. So I have a motion to approve two, three, four, and six. I will second that.
What do we do with any of the things that he wants?
He wanted to do the discussion item, so if we get through this, then we'll get to that.
Just to confirm, he indicated he had nothing on the consent that he was interested in, so thank you for asking.
Appreciate that. No, that's good, okay? Yeah. Okay, well, so we, you seconded, right? So you can call the roll there, I guess.
Yes, Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So let's look at number five, and then I guess here's the time that I would ask for any comments on consent item five. See none? Okay? Did you have on number five?
Yeah, I just had, it's basic, I was just curious as to why we went so far away, whereas it's up north, that we didn't go locally to Ventura County, to different fleet organizations, you know, that. And then my other thing, I just wanted to, it's not a big deal, but if you notice on the back page, the contract has an expiration date of 11/8/25, the Sourcewell. So I just want to make sure, like, if we go ahead with this, that it doesn't come back, and then there's a change, and then there's more money and all of that, that it's... It's throughout, there's a couple of them with that date where it's expired.
And we'll verify that too, it may be that that expired, and then the next one just picks up where that one expired. We put the staff report together before, before that date, so that's probably what has happened here. And we go with Sourcewell, so it's, they do the bidding, other agencies, County Ventura, sometimes City of Oxnard, City of Ventura, all the other agencies around, and so we're able to piggyback on that, and it depends on where they get the best pricing for the vehicles. It happens to be in Northern California, the last time we bought an EV truck was from Sacramento, Ford Sacramento. So it just, it just kind of depends who's got the vehicles and the pricing that they give these agencies.
Fair enough.
Anything else? Okay.
And then I might ask Ms. Chode if she would just come up for the next item.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
This is your first time up here like this, right? Welcome. You want to start?
Yes, so this, and this is for the security, for the tent town, and the contract amount is, I mean, it's a significant amount. And I, my question is, is it better to go with a contract, with the contract that's out, or would it save us money? Would it, is there, would it be more cost-effective to bring these services in-house and to hire our own security team?
Can I ask, my related question, the note I wrote is, are we happy with the service as it is, just as part of the conversation?
Sure, so let me start with that, yes, I would say that we are happy with the service, and it is a little bit of a unique security detail. It's not like other assignments, it's one that requires some understanding of the specific needs of the population and their vulnerability, and that is something that we've really enjoyed with SecureAll. In particular, they have folks in their leadership team that have actually experienced homelessness themselves, and so that's been very helpful in dealing with some of the unique challenges that we encounter, not only with our participants, but those that try to prey on them, because that really is the main reason why SecureAll is there, is just to protect them, not so much, you know, protecting the community from the participants, because that's not what we experience. It is, it is multiple officers with the ability to fill in folks when somebody becomes sick or whatever. We could staff up with our own, our own team, you know, that is something we could look at if council wants us to. I don't have a number for what that would be, but I would say that we are happy with the service that we do receive, and it's been good for the city so far.
So I will, I will add that there's an added benefit here to having a contractor, because they have their own insurance, in addition to our insurance. So any liability, right, there's an opportunity, depending on whatever occurs, that it could run through something other than the city's insurance.
I understand.
The last thing I'll add is that, at this point, they've also formed close relationships with the leadership of the camp, Ventura County Behavioral Health, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, so they're, they're pretty established in our community.
Chief, would you weigh in on that? Thanks.
So occasionally, I do check in with the officers, and I do get a little bit of feedback from the deputies. They feel very comfortable with SecureAll, the security officers really understand the city and kind of what we want, and, you know, our expectations, and really where I'm impressed is they've really kept the riffraff down at night, and they have a good pulse on it, believe it or not, they don't call us too often for stuff, they handle stuff on their own. It's only extreme, you know, issues that they call us for, so I'm actually impressed with the job they're doing.
Okay. Because the dollar amount is high, of course, we see that, and it's, gives us some pretty serious pause. We also understand the service they're offering.
But that's another thing with, the accounting to me doesn't add up. First of all, my first question is, I'm just curious, with so many people, you know, working in finance, that why a contract expired so many months ago without somebody catching that? That's a big thing with security, to not have a contract, in my opinion.
Well, actually, this is related to an item we, we've spoken about with the council before, and that is the accounts payable module. We're deploying an automated module as part of our enterprise system, and Ms. Cho can, can jump in here. That's important, because it won't allow contracts to be paid, or invoices to be paid, rather, unless the contract is current. So it, it impacted a multiple number of, of contracts. And I think you've seen that so far. We've been trying to slowly catch up. But we're close to getting close to implement that. And Ms. Cho, do you want to talk about the rough timing and what we're doing right now to test that module?
Yeah, so with the implementation of the purchase order software, would help support and the financial and budgetary controls in place. So with new contracts that arise, we'll enter that into our PO system. And some of the details that would be included is like the contract terms, the amount not to exceed. So as we get invoices in, it will kind of automatically have a running total balance of like what's spent and what's remaining. So that will, I guess, provide additional, I guess, added layer into our budgetary controls in that aspect. We, our department, in conjunction with Springbrook, provided trainings to the departments to use the PO software. I believe just today, we were able to get access to the live version. So that we'll be able to kind of test how, test out the workflow to ensure that there's no, I guess, kinks in the system. And that we also are working on a procurement policy to go in alignment with our purchase order module. So with that, I would think that beginning in the new calendar year, we could see that in place.
Perfect. And then as far as some of the financing or the, the fees and everything, so it says 542,400 services through June 30th of '26. I have, because I've asked in the past for accounting for Tent Town Cabin Village, and so I've created my own spreadsheet. And going through the warrants from the city, I have 341,785 that has been paid through the warrants through November 2nd.
Just for the security?
Yes. So that leaves, that's a difference of 200,615, you know, divided, so that's four months, or eight months. And then if we divided that, it, it's like 25,000 a month, but we reduced the hours in June to 10,900 roughly. So I feel there's like an overage, like a $100,000 overage. It just, the math doesn't math for me, so I...
So we're gonna, it sounds like what, tell me if I'm getting you right. If you were to sit down with Ms. Cho and see how, what's not, what's not correct here on the accounting part, to see where it's different?
Well, it would be helpful, because I'm just going, if you're going by warrants, I have, you know, I have them through the whole year, going through that to have that. So why is there, you know, and, and I'm not putting any blame, please trust that. And I don't mean to be, come across as that person, because I know you're coming into a lot. So I'm totally willing to work, but it just, I would like to see it add up better or explain, you know, because that's quite a bit of money to not have.
Yeah, if you want, I could kind of just give a brief explanation of the numbers that are listed on the report. So the total contract price for the 542,400 is from the inception of the services that are provided from SecureAll Security. So the amendment number two is a request for 294,900. And this contract, or I'm sorry, this amendment covers two fiscal years. So that's why the comparison is a little bit, I guess, skewed. So of the 294,900, approximately $100,000 of that was spent from March of 2025 to June of 2025. And I have kind of a breakdown of those invoices that I can share with you that totals that $100,000. But additionally, on the second row, that 43,600, those are for invoices paid through October of 2025, but covers July to September services. So just because of the timing of when we received invoices and when we pay it out, there is a little bit of lag time. So what you see, the 43,600 are for services paid through October, from July to September. So with that, that 294,900 amendment, number two, of that $100,000 was already spent in the prior fiscal year. So the budgetary impact for this second amendment for the current fiscal year would be approximately 195,000, which is the 294 minus the 100,000.
Okay.
And to date, we spent $50,000, and that covers September to the first half of November.
So tell me if I'm wrong, those numbers actually sounded very close to what you said the discrepancy might be. Did I get that right?
It, it appears to me, but I'm just, yeah. I don't know, it just, it, to me, when numbers don't add up, you know what I mean? So do you show in your thing from January to November, how much you have showing that we've spent for security?
I have approximate numbers by fiscal year. So in '24, '25, so that would cover June of 2024 to July of 2025, I have approximately 350,000. And for this current fiscal year, starting from July to current, what we have paid is approximately 50,000. And so with the remaining budget, when preparing for the amendment, it was approximated about a little less than $15,000 per month. And that's a little bit of a cushion, because I, for example, with holidays, there's like a time and a half charge. So just to account for a little cushion in that estimation. But for example, in the past month, it was a little under 13,600.
Okay. Well, what I'm also hoping is that with Ms. Cho here and the systems we're talking about, that everything would be matching much more clearly in the things that you bring up. So what I, are you, are you feeling confident in what you just heard, or not confident?
No, I, I hear what she said. Absolutely, I hear, yeah.
Okay.
But we're, we're happy to arrange, if you want to sit down with Ms. Cho to go through the numbers, of course.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay.
If I may add on the question for number five, the information that you're looking for is the last page, in the last paragraph. The contract is in effect until 2026.
Thank you.
So was this typo?
No, it's, Sourcewell does their contracts super weird. And so this makes it look like, if you don't read, first of all, they use European numbers
Right.
in the dates, which is hard to clock.
Right.
But they, they usually have a one-page extension, which next time we can put at the front to make it more accessible.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I was going to say that as well. A lot of times, they have sort of a one-year extension, and it happened to be on the very last page. So it extends to November 8th of '26.
Thank you.
For clarification, yeah.
Wonderful.
And then if we could also acknowledge public comment for the entire consent calendar, too.
Okay. Yes, let's do that. I, if, sorry if I misspoke. I thought I did that, but maybe I did not.
I have no raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay.
On consent, Mr. Stengel?
Okay. Thank you. All right, so then I guess I will move to approve consent item number seven.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And five, Mayor?
Yes, please, we did, five we did already. Didn't we do five?
We did not.
Oh, five and seven together. Sorry, five, thank you.
Roll call.
All right.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Mang.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Hello.
Are you not wanting to approve seven? Oh, sorry, did I misunderstand?
I, so when, when could we meet to go over numbers? Where'd you go?
Okay, she's, she's here, yeah, we, we could, what, I can send you an email, and we can put together the availability.
Okay, perfect, then. I could, is, does Leslie need?
Hello?
I don't know that she was here for, were you here for the conversation on the consent item that we're talking about, five and seven?
I was not.
Okay.
Just joined when I heard the vote.
So let me just make sure, so are you...
We'll go ahead then and go, and then I'll meet with, with her, and we can go over the numbers.
You're saying you don't want to approve seven, or you do want to approve and you will meet? Sorry, I'm just asking for clarification.
We can go ahead and approve and meet.
Okay.
Approve.
So then a yes on five and seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark that vote as yes for Councilmember Mang.
Thank you.
Motion does pass.
All right. So we're at a slight impasse here, which is we are at the discussion item number eight, and Mr. Whitman was asking to be a part of that, and he should be here any second.
He should be, yes.
So let's take a 10-minute break.
Perfect.
Check, check, one, two. Welcome back, thanks for the break. So we will start with a, a roll call again, Mr. Montgomery?
Yes. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Council, or Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule remotely.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
And Ms. Anderson remotely for Ms. Rule?
Yes, councilmember Rule, can we just have you disclose whether there are any individuals eighteen years or older present in the room with you and if there are, the nature of your relationship?
There are no individuals in the room with me.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I can-
Please.
I wasn't here at five. My binder says six.
Yes, sorry about that.
I, I, uh, I wanted to be here for the start of the meeting, but I had no idea we were starting at five.
And our apologies-
We completely understand.
We take full responsibility for that, we're sorry for that.
No worries.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number eight, the concept review, community aquatics program, Mr. Harvey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, joining me for this item is Ms. Rivera and I just would ask that the PowerPoint be brought up. Give it a moment. Okay, there it is. So, uh, there has been some talk at, at past meetings about, uh, the Nordoff High School Pool and potential involvement with the city, but this really is the first time we've come to you with, you know, a real introduction to, to what is possible, uh, over there and really getting the council's input so that we can take direction and move forward. So, as you saw from the staff report, there's at least five options that we have identified, of course, there, there are more and we'll take whatever direction you provide, but let's walk through those options that we have come forward with and, and we can go from there, so. Uh, next slide, please? Right, so as I indicated, uh, this is a, a concept review and you can, as like, as Ms. Anderson likes to say, you can trash or treasure what we propose, you could select one, some, or, or none of these options, you could bring forward your own. Uh, this does align with your arts culture and recreation funding city council goal and whatever you do decide, if it's not already a tactic, we will, uh, want to amend your goals, uh, to reflect that. Next slide, please? So one option is that we could create a city-run community aquatics program at the Nordoff High School Pool. Uh, many of you may know from, from living here or from just paying attention to our salary schedule, we, we have had lifeguards in the past, they're, they're still on our salary schedule. Um, we wouldn't just grab that classification and run with it, we, we would want to do a considerable amount of research uh, and come back to you with a thoughtful concept if we were going to propose one, we would look at uh, other municipalities and agencies in the region and see what they're doing, we would talk to our insurance authority, uh, we would speak with other experts on, on what's involved with putting together, uh, an aquatics program. Um, and we feel that we could do that well within ninety days if that was something you wanted us to pursue, so that's one option. Next slide? Another option, and you have heard from members of the community, um, about this, not only here at these council meetings, but also in email and I'm sure you've, uh, read uh, editorials and letters to the editor in, in the Ojai Valley News, uh, we could, uh, look to support a community-run aquatics, uh, concept. Um, if you were interested in doing that, there is a, uh, a grassroots group in the community, they, they have suggested that the city, uh, allocate ten thousand dollars in seed money, uh, to be, um, provided via a professional services agreement with a group who is local, Lane Four fundraising, uh, they, uh, have been involved and are working on other community aquatics programs and they could put together what a model might look like for Ojai, what's involved, uh, details of that, so that's another option you, you have. Um, and again, that probably is a, a ninety day timeline, if we were gonna come back, maybe less, um, but that's an option. Next slide? Uh, this is not a, a new idea, uh, but this is also something to consider. The city of Ojai provides recreation, as everyone here on council knows, not only to Ojai residents, but to those in the Ojai Valley and beyond. There are facilities not only, uh, within the city's, uh, organization, but also in the school district and also outside of, uh, Ojai that, that are used for recreation. And so we could explore the concept of creating an Ojai Valley-wide special recreation district. Uh, it would be funded through a parcel tax, that's our initial recommendation. Um, we would want to work closely with the city attorney's office and, and others and, and this one probably would require the full ninety days if we were gonna uh, be asked to do this, but we, we could do that and explain how this might work and what might be involved and what the impact might be to our own recreation department and our infrastructure. Next slide, please? This is what I would call, uh, related, uh, not necessarily, you know, a hundred percent, uh, a, a, an aquatics program, but this is, um, uh, re- related use and that is that of creating a community splash pad. Uh, there are some locations in and around town, including some at, uh, Surrzadi, uh, the county Soul Park, also at Nordoff High School. Uh, all would require some analysis and some evaluation, uh, but we could come back to you, uh, with this. Uh, we'd want to tell you about what's involved with, you know, not only building, but maintaining and operating. Um, some of you, particularly the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Rule, have been very active in this area, we were aware of vendors that do this type of, of work and, and I think even the Mayor Protem has already established some relationships with them. So, uh, we'd be happy to come back with a report, uh, probably less than ninety days on, on what is involved with this. Uh, depending on where it would be located, uh, would determine the various agreements that are required, this would be a city capital improvement program item for, uh, likely the next fiscal year if we were given direction.
Can I ask you one question about option three? Of course. Now, when you said you would have a ninety days to come back with a proposal, but that would go to a vote, so we're talking about a twenty twenty-six vote on item three, the Valleywide-
Oh, 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 sorry, go, going back one slide.
Thanks. The recreation just would, would come a year from now.
Thank you, yes, that's a very important point, this, this would, would require, uh, a vote to be at the general election in November twenty-six, but we would come back to you with just simply information on what's involved with this.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Uh, let's advance back to slide four, or option four, pardon me. Uh, okay, I think that's all on that one. Next slide, thank you. Uh, this has been talked about, uh, at prior council meetings, uh, particularly by councilmember Rule, and that is, uh, the potential for organizing a capital campaign for a new community pool at Soul Park. Um, obviously this would require coordination with Aventura County. Uh, we have been successful out there with other recreational ventures, notably the pickleball courts. Um, but if council so directed, we'd be happy to come back, uh, to you within ninety days with what we feel is involved with that and, uh, the, uh, effort involved. Next slide, please? And then, as I indicated, there are certainly other options out there or combinations thereof of what we've, uh, provided or things related to this topic, so certainly you're not limited by what we have in our agenda report. Um, I know that we have representatives from the Ojai Unified School District here with us, including our superintendent Knox, so thank you for, for being here. We also have representatives, uh, or at least a represent, no, I see two, from the grassroots, uh, community pool effort. Um, so, Ms. Rivera, did I neglect to mention anything?
No.
Oh, actually, yes, I did neglect to mention one thing, that maybe Ms. Knox is going to speak to this during public comment, I'm just gonna mention this as an aside, this is kind of a late-breaking item. I did speak with Mr. Olson, the assistant superintendent, about a very recent conversation that the school district had with the YMCA about the Nordoff Pool. Um, there have been ongoing discussions since the YMCA indicated preliminarily that they were not interested in providing a contract, um, aquatics program, they have come back since and said they could, uh, consider bringing back something uh, limited in scope like Saturday swimming lessons, uh, at the pool. And so, um, Mr. Olson indicated he's expecting a proposal from them in the next few days, of course, he said he'd be happy to share it with us and send it over to us, but that, that just took place after the agenda was posted, we became aware of this late Friday in the day. So I, I think, okay, Ms. Knox is nodding her head, it's like it got-
And that's just a Saturday?
That's what, that's what they came out of the gate with, but again, it'd be interesting, interesting to see what was actually in their proposal.
Because do we know the total number of hours or days at the pool that we're talking about covering? I've never heard a number or-
I don't, I don't have a, a, a number yet, I mean, and I would ask maybe during the public comment, we put the superintendent on the spot.
Right, so when we're going out trying to figure things out, here's what we're looking at to see if anybody wants to-
And, and a good point, you know, in, in these analysis periods, there's ninety day periods when we're tasked with doing something, you're, you're absolutely right, that would be a a baseline thing to, to know and, and we also would want other feedback that you'd want, um, us to, to explore, you know?
If I might suggest, you, you could say, what are the hours that students are not using the pool?
Right.
And you would want to look at what hours would the community like to use the pool and see where they overlap, right, that's, that's the idea. Which we could get, right, we already have a little bit of the first.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we'd be happy to take any of that direction. So, uh, why don't I stop talking, uh, and then turn it over to you and the community and-
Let me, let me fir-, we do have some public comments, but any questions for staff before we go to the public?
I, I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at the November sixth Parks and Rec Commission meeting, um, there was an agenda item related to the community pool and there was a decision to create an ad hoc committee. And I scratched my head a little bit on that one because I had understood that city council had an ad hoc committee, that, that doesn't mean that there's a, uh, there isn't the potential for having a committee for both the commission and the city council, but I would think it would be important to make sure that we coordinate if that's what we're doing. Now, I got some feedback from staff that we hadn't created an ad hoc committee, but I had remember, you know, my memory was that we did and I think at that meeting, uh, councilmember Rule pointed out her belief that we had an ad hoc committee of the city council. So I, I guess I'd like clarification, do we have a city council ad hoc committee?
We're not aware of one, we're, we're, there's an ad hoc, there's a couple ad hoc committees involving the school district that I'm aware of, one is for the workforce housing and that is the mayor and councilmember Whitman. There's another ad hoc committee comprised of councilmember Rule and Mayor Protem, no, councilmember Mang, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, for, um, items, uh-
Curriculum and students.
Right, stu-, student-related items. Now-
Just to clarify, as I recall, the ad hoc committee with, uh, councilmember Whitman and, uh, the mayor was to discuss the Nordoff Pool, was not to discuss a community pool or a pool, um, you know, community-wide. It's an ad hoc committee, a two-to-two with the school district. Um, so there, while there might be a bit of overlap in that, uh, if we build, you know, i- i- in other words, the ad hoc committee that the city put together was only to discuss the Nordoff Pool. It wasn't to discuss these other options, it's specifically with the school district. And so, at the same time, while I think the point is well-taken, that there's, that the two ad hoc committees should be, um, you know, should, should be speaking to each other, the purposes of the ad hoc committees are different. Uh, the Park and Recs wants to do their own evaluation, although they obviously did not know at that point, because I'm the Park and Rec liaison, they did not know during that meeting that this was going to be an agenda item, although they probably know now.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's probably, uh-
The minutes that we have for the meeting where the ad hocks were created don't reflect this additional committee, um, so I think it would be helpful if you could just affirm who you believe is on the ad hoc committee.
I can tell you what I, I can tell you what I think happened. Um, we saw that this was needing some guidance and I started by approaching OUSD, asking questions. We came here, Mr. Whitman and I decided we will be Brown Act buddies on this issue and s-, and we have met, we've talked and there's been some conversation with the OUSD, but I don't recall that we formally said, here's an ad hoc committee, we chose the people, I do not recall that piece.
Okay.
On the, on the Nordoff.
It's an easy fix tonight, right, we can just affirm who, who is on the pool ad hoc committee and then you can make a choice, the commissions are your commissions.
Sure.
They work at your direction, you can tell them to, this is a council matter, they can dissolve their ad hoc committee. You can look at strategies for you to work with them, um, or give them direction on the parts of this issue that you would like their feedback on, you can make a decision about what you want and then send the draft to them for feedback, you have a lot of options.
So I'm wondering if what, what we decide tonight will guide what we, what our next steps might be.
Yeah, and just maybe be thoughtful about how you would like the Parks and Rec Commission, if at all, to be involved in whatever your decision is to do.
One thing that, you know, so I was the liaison before councilmember Rule and the commission has already done some research into these options and they started with a ca-, uh, a discussion about the partner, a partnership with OUSD and then it expanded into a larger conversation about the feasibility for a community pool. So I, I feel like, I feel like they already have done some of this groundwork and, and it would behoove us to, to involve them in the process because because they're-
For sure.
They're in it.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think just a conversation to clarify roles and goals.
Mm-hmm.
And we can, um, uh, with Ms. Rivera and any other staff members and the, um, committee members and, and just make sure that we're not, you know, marching at cross purposes.
Absolutely. Ms. Rivera, does that resonate with the understanding of the situation?
Yes, and one thing that the commission did mention is that they just want to be part of the talks. So I think that's why this came about, so, you know, as long as they're in the room or know about the talks, they would be very, very happy with that as well, you know, part of it.
I'm glad we're bringing this up now.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Rule?
Just, I, I, I don't know if this is discussion, but I, I, I think the Park and Recs, you know, they've been thinking about this for twenty years, they've been two, you know, two of the members have been on that commission for twenty, twenty-five years and they've been thinking about this the whole time, so I agree with councilmember Lang that it would behoove us, you know, it would be smart to get their participation, uh, you know, as much as is possible, they've done a lot of thinking for a long time about this. Um, and so they should certainly be at the table as a stakeholder in this discussion, you know, if, for no other reason, as community members.
For sure. No, thank you.
May, Mayor, it seems like we've moved past questions and maybe we should take public comments so that- Mayor, it seems like we've moved past questions and maybe we should take public comments so that-- we can finish the robust discussion.
I asked a question of Ms. Rivera to say, is that her understanding of the situation? Okay, let's go to public comments. First, I have Cheryl Knox, then I have Bill Miley, and then I have Larry Stengel. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right. Hi, everybody. Mayor Gilman, members of the council staff. It's very nice to be here with you for the public who does not know who I am. I'm Dr. Cheryl Knox, the superintendent for Ojai Unified School District. So I just wanted to be here to, first of all, thank you all for putting, actually, items eight and nine on the agenda today. We're very excited to be here to talk to you about both of these and eager to hear, you know, how we can partner and have your support. So I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that I did write a letter to our entire Ojai Valley community. It went out last night through our channels, and I believe all of you have hopefully seen a copy of it. For our audience who might want to look at it, who have not been able to, it's on our school district Facebook page, and we did post it on our website tonight. So if anybody wants to read it. But I think, you know, it was purposefully to try to clear up any, what I would call, false narratives out there about the pool and to really explain two things. Number one, we are so eager to share our pool with the community. It is a beautiful $15 million Nordoff Aquatic Center, and our students are using it and will need to use it. But there are a lot of times throughout the day that we can share it with the community. The second thing that the letter explains is that the state funding that the school district receives has to be spent and prioritized on the educational programming of students. So we really are not at leisure to pay for the programming for the community. And so we are dependent, as a school district, on a partner. And we are certainly hoping that the city is possibly going to be our partner in this. Historically, you have been. I think into the early 2000s, our last understanding was maybe around 2008, the partnership ended. You guys used to rent our old Nordoff Pool and run programming. So we're eager to do something like that again. Obviously, this is all new for us with the new pool. But again, I just want to point out that, you know, a huge thank you to our community for passing both Measure J and Measure K, bringing this beautiful aquatic center to our community. I think there are a lot of ways to be able to use it together, and, you know, we appreciate the conversation you're having tonight. I think there's a lot of different pathways to get to some kind of partnership with either you all or the other organizations who are interested in supporting this, but we are willing and able. I know there's a lot of questions about the hours and when it can be open. We certainly are eager to open it in the evenings, sort of 6:30 to 9:00 PM-ish, and Saturdays and Sundays, and certainly throughout the summer. We know those are really the freest times. We have concerns about issues with student safety during the school day, but we are not opposed to talking through those kind of issues. That would be sort of a negotiation and a conversation about what kind of programming is offered then and how we can do it safely during the school day. So once we have, you know, somebody--
Thank you so much, Ms. Knox. Bill Miley, Larry Stengel, and then Carrie Johnson.
Hello.
Hi.
These are impressive five options to choose from, all potentially interesting and adding benefit to water recreation for the city and the Ojai Valley and visitors. I'm a member of the new community group named Ojai Community Pool Foundation. It formed, as you may know, from the need for a structure to enable full community use of the new Nordoff Pool Aquatic Center. My comments are mostly on one and two. Numbers three, four, and five certainly have future merit, but are huge figurative mountains to climb. Number one, authorizing the City Park and Recreation Commission. Like all other activities this department has been offering for decades, water recreation is essential and was in the past with working public pools. Having a list of such past offerings certainly is a way to start. This form of programming does not offer overall community use, operation, and management or unscheduled time for open swim, recreation time for families, and others. Number two option, consider supporting the initial funding research designed by Lane Four, $10,000 element. It would be an initial phase of our active design package. Both items one and two have value for instituting community use of the new Nordoff Pool. However, my opinion is, without the informed creation-- created, information, created-- by option number two, pool community study at Lane Four, no possible structure for operating the pool as an aquatic center for school and community is possible for evenings, weekends, and summers. It's been estimated that a community pool, student-use pool, would cost a million dollars to run over a year. I urge your council to seriously consider supporting, quote, "The Lane Four Path Forward, enabling Measure K Bond Approval to become a reality for a community-school aquatic center." And I'm a member of the Ojai Community Pool Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Larry Stengel and then Carrie Johnson, please.
Larry Stengel, good evening.
Hi.
Hi. I agree with everything he says.
Cool.
All right. I'm in the same group. I'm also on the Ojai Unified School District Bond Overcitizen Bond Oversight Committee. We came up with a number of a quarter of a million last year, and that's just to have the pool there. That's not on, that's not used, that's not doing anything, and that's putting money on the shelf for future repairs and renovation. So that's just a budget number for OUSD, and thank you very much for your letter. It was greatly appreciated, and I think it's wonderful. City-run community pool, I see that as a given. They already have the scheduling, they have the people, and it's like plug-and-play, and somebody's got to do the scheduling, somebody's got to do the collecting of the fees, somebody's got to do all that. We already have it. It's a number. Monetize the cost of having them do it. Having the Park and Rec operate that portion of the pool, done. Lane Four, definitely. Lane Three-- sorry, Lane Three. Number Three, that's probably eventually what's going to happen because the shortfall from the pool and the cost is unsustainable by the city because the city's only going to contribute so much money. And unless the county kicks in, bless their heart, for the 20,000 people that aren't in the city, there'll be a shortfall, and that money's got to come from someplace, and it's not our pool as a city resident. So that, and it's a parcel tax, I don't know, 20,000 parcels in the city, in the area, and at $20 apiece, it's 400 grand. And it would only be for the pool. My fear with the Park and Rec district collection is that it creates an empire for hiring people and doing stuff. The money can be collected by the county, given to the city, and they pay the bills. We don't need any more employees to run the Park and Rec district. They're somebody's cousin. Splash pad, why not Libby Park, somewhere or someplace where it's close to where there are people? Sewell Park is nice, but it's a bit out of the way for the most of the population. So closer in would be nice, Libby or Nordoff or someplace. Sewell Park, unless we own Sewell Park, why would we spend 10, 15, 20 million dollars on county property? Because the ongoing cost of that pool is going to be as much as the pool at Nordoff. And the pool at Nordoff, if it was bigger, we could do meets or national, whatever, bigger. And if that's what we're going to do, great, but raising 18, 20, 25 million plus another, whatever it is every month or every year from the city, we already have budget lines we're incorporating, whether it's the Ojai permanent housing or something. We're accumulating all these permanent expenses. And I don't think a pool is sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Stengel. Carrie Johnson, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Carrie Johnson, and I am a product of the Nordoff Pool. My family moved to Upper Ojai in 1969. We are a swimming family from Orange County, and one of the reasons we headed down the hill into Ojai rather than Santa Paula is that Ojai had a pool. Myself and my four older brothers joined the swim team and doubled the number of members. Within five years, the numbers were close to 75 kids in this program. We had a fantastic coach. We created a fantastic community of swimmers. Other than AAU swimming, there was also a very strong influence at Nordoff, and his name was Warren Glazier. He was a teacher there. He had a pool, he had the pool deck decorated like a dock. Lots of pilings and very thick rope everywhere to keep people away from the edge of the pool. One of Warren's aquatic-based classes was first-age CPR and water safety instructor. I got my first job, I took the class, got my first job lifeguarding at the racket club at the age of 15. I worked there year-round through the summers and during school until I got out of high school. I went on and swam in college, and then at that point, I got a job for the state parks as a state park lifeguard at the beach in Ventura. So I have been, let's see, in college, let's see, I'm sorry, is-- and soon got involved in the junior guard program once I started guarding at the beach. I have been blessed with the privilege to serve well over 25,000 kids and their families over the years, many of which are from Ojai. You are, if you are unfamiliar with the program, our goal is to get kids ocean safe. You can't do the junior guard program unless you know how to swim, though. Okay, rather than thinking about how great it will be to have a new pool over the years, I have gone one step further and thought about what I would do with that pool. The potential this beautiful pool has is only limited by creativity and direction. If the pool was open now, I would have it split in half and do both club water pole on one side and youth and master swimming on the other. Half-week, half-week days after the high school team is done. So each half of the pool would have its own program going on. What a way to start building the high school teams as well. Right now, the pool gets used once a year by elementary school practicing snorkeling for their fifth-grade trip to Catalina Island. This is great, but why not have each fifth-grade class come to Nordoff one day a week for appropriate-level swimming lessons, self-rescue, and rescue swimming techniques? So many kids don't know how to swim, don't even have swimsuits. The best rescue I have had was not in the ocean--
Yep. That's okay.
I haven't done this before, but I have a great idea about--
Have this be a "to be continued." Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there anybody online, Mr. Montgomery?
Mayor, we have no raised hands from our two Zoom participants right now.
I thought we were more popular. Okay. All right. Well, let me just, I'll say something that Mr. Whitman already knows, which is we were present for a Lane Four presentation, so we did hear them present and offer this, basically, this initial feasibility study where they would look at, they would work with OUSD, look at hours and need, and they've done this before. So just, I know they haven't presented in front of us here, but personally, I would feel confident if we were to choose that as one of our options that we would initiate with them to see, my opinion is, it does give us an outside view of somebody who is experienced to say, here's what we have seen, here are pitfalls to look out for, here's whatever costs, just to-- for my other council members who have maybe not met with them before. Not to say that's the only thing we should say, but that's one.
Yeah, so I wanted to say that in addition to the idea that the Parks and Rec Commission has been grappling with this issue for a couple of decades, there was a very concerted effort. There was a pool committee for Ojai. And so I think, and there's a lot of those members of that committee are still in the community. So additional download of information and ideas should come from them. One of the things that I just learned yesterday is that that committee discussed at length the splash pad. And I don't know exactly, you know, what their conclusions were, but I think it'd be good to get a download from them, and maybe, you know, maybe there's materials to acquire. I agree with what the mayor just expressed, and I kind of see one and two potentially being merged or a hybrid. And I like the idea of getting an independent report that talks about existing programs in other communities where you've got a school-based pool, and then you've got multiple jurisdictions combining for that community pool access concept and some information about, you know, how much those programs cost to run so we can compare what we're projecting. I think that option three is something that we do have to look at, but I would suggest that that gets tabled until our new city council takes the chair because I think the idea of going through the process of, you know, creating a special district and getting advice about pros and cons, it's going to be in their lap eventually, and we should hear their advice along, you know, with staff. And so I would suggest we take three and make that a future item. And I'm interested in the scope of number four. You know, so explore the need. Certainly, if we're just looking, you know, how much how much desire from the community is there to have a splash pad? And I also think where would that be is a, you know, important question. So I would potentially support doing that because I'm envisioning that being not a big expensive project to engage in. And then, you know, for number five, I think that that would be the fallback. In my mind, that would be the fallback. I think the community's made a big investment in what they understand to be a community pool. And I think we ought to, you know, make the effort to see if we can create the community pool program. That was my sister speaking earlier, and I would-- we did have a great asset in teaching water safety, life-saving skills, above and beyond the exercise component.
For sure.
I'd love to see that come back.
I would reflect too. Number three is pretty long-term, so it doesn't address the need really for the community more immediately. So I do like the idea of that, but not to solve this problem right now, maybe in the future. But let me hear from others.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I wanted to speak up for--
Oh, please, Leslie, go.
Had a raised hand.
You're muted. Leslie, you're muted.
Okay.
Yep.
I actually see all of these as being worthy of investigation. And I don't-- because there are such questions about a Nordoff Pool being a recreation pool. I understand it being programmatic, and that's great. I understand having, you know, this program going for so-and-so and this program going for these kids. But I'm, what I heard over and over is families wanting a place to take their kids to go and have a water experience, not to have them swimming down lanes and not-- I mean, of course, taking courses on water safety is great. And so because I am not convinced Nordoff Pool is exactly built for that, like, so I-- Like, so I believe that, you know, I would like to see all of these investigated. I agree about the, the special district, recreation district. I mean, you know, and then, and then if the community were, if Valleywide, they were to say no, well, we would be like, we would be nowhere. So I guess my point is, is that I think it is worthy to investigate a capital campaign to see what that would look like, to get a sense of what it would cost and if it would be possible to raise that sum of money. So only because, like I said, I'm not convinced that the Nordoff pool is going to serve the interests of, you know, families who just want recreation on hot days, you know what I mean? So is it possible to make it, to have a community pool? So I, I think it's important to investigate that only because it comes up all, you know, every time this conversation comes up, the same sort of options come up. So I, and I think that the Park and Rec Recreation Department, if they wanted to take on investigating, you know, with the city, what a capital campaign might be. As you know, Mayor Gilman, you know, we have, we put a candidate on the Park and Recs Department Commission that is a very experienced capital campaigner. Has, you know, I don't think he would be daunted by any, by the amount of money that a community pool would cost. I think that that is a doable, possible, you know, Steve Bennett got a $650,000 for, you know, rehabbing Sarzadi, right? I mean, he got that, and we still have that to spend. So I would not want to not investigate that option for those reasons.
No, thank you.
And I would like to investigate all of the other options because, once again, I don't think it's an either-or. It's possible that the Nordoff pool is going to serve certain functions, right? I mean, it's going to be a place where you can get these kinds of courses and you can have these programs and you can have, you know, you can, you can train swimmers and all of that. And we potentially might need another sort of pool for the community.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Yes, I, I agree with Councilmember Rule. I mean, I agree with a little bit of everything I've heard tonight. But I agree with, with her, that, that, that I would like for us to, to work with the, I mean, the Parks and Rec Commission has already been doing a lot of this work. And it just feels like there's a disconnect that we aren't bringing them into this conversation in a way that's really meaningful. Because this is a, the question of what pool is going, what, what aquatics program is going to work for us transcends, it's bigger than just the Nordoff opportunity right now. That, so I, I would, I would be in favor of slowing this down and bringing the Parks and Rec Commission in, working in conjunction with them to have an ad hoc committee. And then bringing it back with more developed options. About, that's about the pool. About the splash pad, there's, you know, we haven't, if I'm correct, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, in that, in that funding that we received for the renovation, the park renovation of Sarzadi, we still have some money available. If we wanted to look at a splash pad, I think that could be a separate, a separate thing that, that we could, that we could look at that, at that location because we already have money for that. And so that could be an option that would be more immediate than, than looking at, you know, a build-out at Seoul and involving the county or anything else.
Quick question.
Yep.
Would you, I hear what you're saying. Would you, would you stop number two, let's say the lane four people doing the feasibility study before you involve the Parks and Rec, or would that be in concert?
Hmm, yeah, that's a great question.
Well, the only reason why I offer that is because it seems to me, even though the Parks and Rec has worked on this, they're gonna have some just other expertise that these folks may not have, just not having done it before in other places, just an idea.
Yeah. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I mean, I think if this, I think this group, we heard it in public comments, we had feedback that came in through email.
Yeah.
I think this group is, is, can, can work in concert with whatever, whatever Parks and Rec is going to do. So I don't, I don't see them as being mutually exclusive.
Cool. Just asking.
Yeah. And I, I just wanted to, and I meant to say this, so I apologize. The enthusiasm for the community group to get this pool moving is not something that can be underestimated. You know, the, the motivation, the self-starting of, of all of this, you know? So I see them sort of as fundamental to moving this forward because they're so highly motivated. And so I, I think that number two, for that reason, is very, very important.
Got, no, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, so, because we'll get a return on that because this group really wants to know the answers to these questions, and they have been very active to date.
That, that, yep.
Yeah, and I think they could work with the, with Park, with the Parks and Rec Commission. But yeah, I agree with Councilmember Rule that they're very, I mean, they're so excited about it and they're, it's great to have community involvement. So I would, I would, I don't see that, I see these as being two separate.
I, yeah, I get it. So I, I want to hear from Ms. Mang, but Mr. Harvey, I want to ask you this question. So if you say, oh, we want to do one, two, four, and five possibly, or at least, how is, I mean, are you saying, yes, you guys want to do all of that? Is that reasonable?
Of course. I mean, I think, you know, we would, if we're bringing back everything, it just, I would, it would depend on how you want it. If something's ready sooner than ninety days, we could certainly bring that back. If you wanted everything to come back together, but yeah, we, we would get going and get to work.
Because it's, just if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, we could initiate lane four, that's number two. We could work with Parks and Rec around just the quick feasibility around a splash pad at Sarzadi with some funding that's already there. So that's, you've got number four there, and then we can then look at the possibility of number one. And then, you know, if we, I, I, on the, the three and five seem longer and harder, but not out of the question? And then involving the commission, I think, makes perfect sense?
Sure. I mean, we'll, all this is possible. We could bring back everything or nothing.
Ms. Mang, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Well, I just agree with what everybody has said. The one thing I struggle with is number...
Oh, your microphone, yeah.
I agree with everything that everybody said tonight. The one thing I do struggle with is number five, investing millions of dollars into a property that we don't own. I struggle with that with pickleball, too, you know, so that's...
I mean, between all five, that one seems the longest out, I guess, the longest term, and maybe the less possible, but interesting, I suppose.
Right.
And I'm just, on that point, I think the Nordoff pool took about $15 million to build. And my understanding that is that Mr. Steingold is correct that, you know, it costs $250,000 a year just to let that pool sit there.
For sure.
And then you do programming and you're talking about annual costs of a million dollars. So a capital campaign to raise money for the pool would also have to include an endowment that would help generate that million-dollar expense.
That would be difficult, but, and then I guess one other question, Mr. Harvey, that I'm thinking about is that as the YMCA is working with OUSD, you know, as a possibility for a day, that's interesting to see if that develops as part of the mix, so having some time...
Sure, we, we bring that back as soon as possible. I think there's the possibility that, you know, swimming lessons could be available at, at that pool on Saturdays. Now, I will point out that Mr. Olson did mention that the school district would be looking for the city to underwrite that. So that would definitely be coming, you know, from the city's budget if that moves forward.
It could be part of the mix, though, that we end up settling on, but it's an interesting detail for a day.
And I think we need to say, you know, if we're gonna underwrite the Nordoff pool, you know, how does that compare with the expense of a city-owned pool, even if it's in, you know, a county-owned property? But for instance, I think Help of Ojai got a forty- or fifty-year lease to the Honor Farm. I'm not sure, but I know it's a really long, beyond the life of a, beyond the, you know, sort of the life of a pool. And the next question is that we've been discussing, and I, and I understand that this adds, you know, more complexity to it, but we've also spoken about, you know, absorbing Seoul Park as a city park since it is in the boundaries of the city of Ojai. And, you know, we never have really moved forward with that with either, you know, Ventura County Supervisors or Ventura County Parks and Rec, and it might be a conversation to have.
That might be a preliminary conversation, possibly.
Yeah, for sure.
Now, just, just to clarify my thought for you, I was, when I think of hypothetically, if the Y was to run Saturdays at OUSD and we underwrote it, that's so that it can open right away-ish, so that it could start, so it isn't that we're committing to anything like a ten-year or anything, it's more like just...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. I wasn't meaning to make the equation between the YMCA Saturday program. I was more speaking about if we were to be a full-time underwriting partner.
Understood.
And, and so we would need to know what the costs of that were versus what the return on the investment would be versus the cost of a pool that was our, ours, and what the return on investment, you know, outside of what that would be, you know, days, times, what it would be.
I totally understand. I was thinking, one, one is more immediate and the others are more long. That's all.
And I would, I would agree that immediate is great. Let's get that pool open, let's get people in that pool, let's get the kids, let's get the families, let's start with what we can do, and let's do it. And so I think that's sort of, I mean, I'm totally for that, yeah.
So can I modify? Here's just an idea. If number five turned into something like a preliminary conversation around what it would mean for the city of Ojai to absorb Seoul Park?
I would want our city attorney to weigh in on, on that. How do you feel about that?
No, I'm not saying you're only like, you're just the beginning, you're not even, you're just having, making a couple of phone calls.
I think those conversations have taken place and, and they didn't, they didn't mature.
We might be in a different environment these days, but...
I would also say that this agenda item is very heavily the pool.
I understand.
And I would encourage you to have an item that comes back to have that discussion. That's what you'd like.
It's, so if I might suggest to my colleagues, it seems to me that we are, we're pretty settled on one, two, and four. And that three and five seem a little longer out. And if, if I, if I will offer that we, we ask the staff to pursue one, two, and four, and then possibly we would come back on three and five at some later time to revisit?
I'd support that.
I would as well.
That's my motion then, I guess.
I would like to...
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to have something in the motion that, that, that talks about Parks and Rec.
And we involve the Parks and Rec Commission in, in the committee.
Exactly.
Are you, we okay with that, that addition?
Can we clarify who the second is? Because we, I heard a lot of support.
Mr. Whitman was the first person to say I would support that. Are you okay with that?
Being, are you okay with the second?
Yeah.
And are you okay with adding the Parks and Rec Commission as the involved in the conversation?
I, I think that we should have the discussion with the Parks and Rec Department about how we move forward.
The commission, the commission specifically, yes, thank you.
That sounds good.
And then just to clarify, is the council interested in creating its own ad hoc? Or are we relying on the Parks and Rec Commission ad hoc at this time and then a report back for your consideration?
Because how does that work? Because I recall when we were voting on the ad hoc for the workforce housing. And when Mr. Gilman said, oh, and that would be the pool as well. So just, I don't know if that causes any friction or anything, but that was definitely discussed.
So let me, can I just jump in there really quick? So what meeting, can, can someone please remind me what meeting that took place at?
I believe they're talking about the August 26th meeting.
So those, those minutes have been approved, right?
I have them here.
The best practice would be, you know, once the minutes are approved, that is your official record. Now, we can always go back and revise minutes based upon the video, but that is what we operate from. So if it's important, you've got a whole batch of minutes on this meeting agenda. It's really important that you take a look at those because if we got something wrong, we, it happens. But, you know, on this particular item, I think it's, it's fine, we can easily cure it by, by creating an ad hoc committee here right now. But that just wasn't our recollection and when we, when I went back to the minutes.
Whatever makes it easy.
But my, my suggestion on that point would be that we schedule the meeting that I mentioned with the Parks and Rec Director and the two individuals that volunteered to be part of the ad hoc committee and that, and the mayor and I, and that, that we discuss roles going forward. And if it doesn't make sense to have a, a city council ad hoc committee at this point in time, then, then we don't. And if it makes sense to have, you know, I think we can just discuss what should happen going forward. And then we can bring that back.
Certainly. Sorry to step on you. Let's just create that ad hoc committee in this meeting, and then if you want to dissolve it, that's fine. If that's okay. That, that way you guys aren't acting as brown act buddies, you're just acting in a direction from...
You have direction from council to be, to be engaging and, and doing the things that you'd like.
I already have that for me.
It's okay.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm happy to go back and watch the tape. I didn't have time today when it came up, if that, if that would be helpful to the council.
If, if we were to proceed and say, since Mr. Whitman and I have been working on this already, we proceed with it, but we involve the Parks and Rec Commission in our conversation, I'm all for it.
And, and we, we come up with a way of including their involvement in ours that is harmonized.
Great. Love it. Oh, yeah, Ms. Rule? You're muted still.
What is the downside to including five? Because if we go all through this and we find that, you know, OUSD is going to provide some things, but it's not going to provide everything that we want. Like, I don't understand what the downside of investigating five is. I, I, I never, I just don't understand it, and especially as the Park and Rec Commission was enthusiastic about doing that. I mean, we, we couldn't make a decision on the Nordoff pool without having information about what it would cost or what the process would be for building our own pool. How could we make that assessment?
I would say the downside is, at least right now, is it seems, if I was going to be involved in a capital campaign to look at the land and the cost and how to raise the money, that seems like a huge task. That's, when you ask what's the downside, that's what I would say.
Because it's too large a task?
I'm saying if we think of all the tasks, I would not put that on this, at the same par with one, two, and, and four. But in other words, I would do one, two, and four more immediately. I would not do five immediately if I had to do either or.
And, and it's without prejudice to five becoming a sharper focus as our discussions evolve about how to do this stuff?
Yeah, what, what pauses, what gives me a pause is that it's, it's initiating, you know, the way that it's worded, it's about initiating the capital campaign. It's, it's like, it's, it assumes that there is a decision to move in this direction, is that...
You could change the language and provide staff direction to explore the feasibility instead.
And I don't see the downside to that. I just, I don't...
Of what, what it would take to construct and engaging with the county if there's even an appetite.
I know, I know you're saying you don't see the downside, and I was telling you why I do, but...
Or how it would be more complicated than having lane four do a whole build-out or negotiating with Nordoff as to what, when, and what, and how, and, and how we, you know? I mean, those are deep negotiations that require compromise.
No, I understand. I'm trying to say the lane four proposal is the feasibility study for working at OUSD.
Right, but OUSD has, I mean...
That's, I mean, the scope is much smaller and it's more pointed, and we would get that information faster. So if you said, let's engage with lane four on a proposal for a, some, a pool at Seoul Park, that's a different proposal. That seems much more elaborate. So when you, when you just ask what's the downside, that's how, that's, I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, I'm saying I just wouldn't put... I'm saying I just wouldn't put that as the highest priority, that's all.
Right, I would say it seems much simpler because when we start negotiating with OUSD about, you know, whether or not adults and children can be in the same place at the same time, you're talking about very deep conversations. You're talking about, you know, laws and you're talking about liability and you're talking about all kinds of things.
So let me just, let me stop you to say, yeah, there is a proposal, there is a motion that was seconded for one, two, and four for now that we modified to add the, the um ad hoc committee with the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, so I would like to suggest a friendly um motion that we instruct the city manager to do initial investigation as to what it would cost to have a capital campaign. You know, like what's the cost of, you know, that's, that's my friendly amendment.
I, I'm not going to accept that for now, but if you want to make another motion, you certainly can.
Okay.
And I would just like to clarify that um council is creating an ad hoc that is open to discussing with the Parks and Rec ad hoc. It's not a combined committee.
P.S., I'm looking at August and it says appoint a two council member and it does not have the pool. It only has the housing, P.S.
Yes, I'm happy to go back and watch the tape if you'd like me to and if we got the minutes wrong.
I've got it. Anyway.
One, one question, so, you know, all, a lot of this, every, every one of these options has a ninety-day cap. Is that hard and fast? Could we extend it out to, to four, five months, six months?
We're happy to take more time if you'll give it to us, sure.
Cause that, that would give the parks, well, that will give the Parks and Rec more time to be involved.
Oh, sure.
That would give them more time because they're going to be uh exploring the ad hoc committee that they have. It's already exploring option five. So if we, if we extend this, give a little bit more time, then, then I think we could have more leeway for.
What if we just had a report out?
The only, I mean, the only concern about that is that there is interest in getting community members into the pool as quickly, as quickly as is practical.
Yeah.
It, it, it's not going to happen on a bullet train. Uh, you know, unless uh of YMCA comes in with some type of wonderful proposal for doing that. But the, the sooner we move, you know, things forward on these issues, the sooner we're potentially looking at actually getting lifeguards on the deck and people in the.
And that's my interest as well. So i- if it was that you give us a report out of where you're at in ninety days and but.
I think we could accomplish a lot. And I put those numbers in there thinking that that was feasible. And we're really talking about the second meeting in February twenty-sixth. And, and really, and we would want to have as much information as possible to you at that discussion.
I like that.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
I just have a question, Mayor, just to be clear for the record.
Okay.
Um, the creation officially now of this ad hoc would be that extension of the council member Whitman and Mayor Gilman?
Yes.
Ad hoc committee.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Working with the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you for confirming.
Thanks. Okay, all right, we're ready for a vote.
Roll call.
Yep.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayn.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. All right, this is exciting. All right, cool. Yes, thank you, Ms. Rivera. Okay, we're on to number nine. Ojai Unified School District requests for a pledge for a career technical education facility program grant match for the modernization of Matilah Auditorium.
Mayor, I know that uh the, the Ojai Unified School District is here. They have provided a presentation, so um this item is coming from, from you and the Mayor Protem, but I would make a recommendation that you allow the school district to show their presentation to kind of prime the pump. And then perhaps you can take it from, from there.
Yep, thanks, sounds good. Thank you, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you. So um again, Dr. Cheryl Knox, Superintendent, Ojai Unified School District, here with Kim Hoy, um serving in many roles at Nordoff. Our dance teacher and also the um visual and performing arts department chair. And then very importantly, our teacher on special assignment, doing all of the administrative work to oversee our career technical education programming. Um and so we're here together to present this uh proposal.
So we have a beautiful slide for you just to invoke the history of Matilah Auditorium. First built in nineteen twenty-nine, um subject to some real issues in nineteen thirty-three with an earthquake that really took it down. And it was rebuilt, you see this article from nineteen thirty-six. Just wanted to acknowledge the history of it. This was back when Matilah's campus, as we have known it, was really Nordoff Union High School. Um so we wanted to be able to just invite you to that and also to acknowledge that this was originally a Works Progress Administration um project under FDR. Um and in fact, the cost of the school district was only four thousand dollars. Um so with that, we want to share with you more about a very special opportunity we have. With timing we would not have expected. We want to honor and, and share how um career technical education is a complicated space among the Department of Education. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Cheryl.
Um so um before I dive into this slide, I just wanted to pull us back to a thirty-thousand-foot view because I'm sure people are asking um why we're not using bond money to renovate this auditorium. Um over ten years ago, we had a needs assessment done and over a hundred million dollars in projects were identified. Um, you know, there were, were a lot of needs in the district, including new roofing, plumbing, sewage, uh piping, that kind of stuff. Um and so HVAC, those sorts of things, of course, our aquatic center. We're super grateful for our community for passing both Measure J and Measure K to the tune of eighty million dollars. It has been infused into our district and has transformed our sites uh in the last decade. But unfortunately, this auditorium did not make the list. Um and now we are in our final millions of bond dollars with projects already identified, including um rebuilding the stadium, which we all know is a priority uh for the community and for the district, and uh renovating kitchens. There are many other items that are on that list that are going to more than exhaust the bond funds. Um so when we came to looking at uh the funds we could offer as a district with what we have in other funds, including developer fees, um the district uh is able to put forth seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward this grant. Um we're looking to get the matching uh dollars, which Kim will talk more about, from the state. Um but we really felt like this was a good opportunity to reach out to all of our community members and organizations who prioritize the performing arts, who prioritize the arts. Because this is a, an ask of our entire community to be able to step forward and say, we're willing to help out. We're willing to pledge whatever dollar amount. Um because again, any dollar amount, we get up to one point five million, we can ask the state for matching funds. So we're here today because as we've talked to people throughout the community and asked uh members of the community and organizations, um they have told us other entities to reach out to and you're one of the entities that they encouraged us to reach out to. We know that um prioritizing the performing arts is very important, or the arts in general are, are important uh priorities for you all. Um and so we're here today to ask, you know, would you be willing to um pledge two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward this grant ask of the state?
With that, we also want to mention that the nature of the timing is tricky. We want to be really forthright about that. Um, the State Department of Education provides us a lot of grant deadlines. And so, for example, in the last two months, we've actually submitted two other CTE grants. So we just mentioned that context for your understanding that um as a small school district, we're actually one of the few districts, we, there are only forty districts in the state of California that receive multiple layers of funding and we are one of them. Um so we're tiny but mighty and we look for that. And so this opportunity, we've been looking for this opportunity, we've been waiting for it. Um but also we wanted to be sure we were in a good enough standing to be able to actually fulfill it as a district and pursue it. Um so I also want to just mention that this is personal to me to some degree. Um I'm one of the few people in the community who, since two thousand and five, I've directed close to thirty performances um with student numbers anywhere from twenty students to ninety-nine. Um and so I can tell you, I have lived, eaten, and slept and breathed the space um and understand intimately that we have um a jewel in the rough currently. Um as she is ninety-six years old, we have this special opportunity. The opportunity requires a one-to-one, dollar-for-dollar match. Um as Cheryl mentioned, the district has initiated a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution towards the match. And then we personally have raised, it's actually up by fifteen hundred dollars today, uh nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and change. And so just to be clear, where those monies have come from? It's come from our advisory committee. We have an advisory committee of approximately thirty-three individuals representing multiple organizations. I think I counted eleven. Um and ultimately, most of those organizations either use the space or support programs that have used the space and would like to use it again in the future. When we think about CTE, I'm guessing perhaps you might not be familiar with that terminology. Most people don't know what career technical education is. Um so if you could imagine this, it is the potential for students to acquire specialized skills over the course of multiple classes. So for example, at Nordoff, we have multiple pathways. Those pathways are broader than the pathways that use this facility. But in particular, theater, dance, and now digital media could be able to use this facility for specific industry training. Uh what that looks like is students would take a, a minimum of three hundred hours of coursework over their high school career. Now, because we are consolidated, some of our pathways actually are starting with junior high students. Um so for example, in the grant we wrote down, about five hundred students per year use the facility. Also, our elementary music program as well as our high school musical. So it really touches a large majority of students. And again, you might think only five hundred, but imagine that over many, many, many years ahead. I also want to point out the nature of CTE, that it's aligned with state standards. So our teachers are expected to hold responsibility for instructional, instruction of those standards. Um so we definitely do our homework, we attend professional development, we are expected to prepare students for careers. One of the issues for us currently is that our facility does not allow for our instruction to be equitable compared to other places, other school districts. When our students walk into other locations, they think, oh, wait, it's like that over there, but we have this. And so we definitely have um some work to do to bring our facility to industry standard in a few areas. Safety, lighting, sound, projection, as well as seating. When it comes to lighting, we are aiming to avoid having um any folks, we don't have students climb on ladders, but we're aiming to avoid having community members have to climb on ladders. Currently, if anyone wants to focus a light or move a light, they actually have to get up on a ladder. And in fact, if you could imagine that and extrapolate that to as many as fifty lights in the space, it's extremely time-consuming, it's inefficient, the lights are broken, or if they're not broken, they're very hot. Um and every single group who comes in to use the space has to reinvent the space for that purpose. We are aiming to have um a full lighting plot that is hung, that is no longer a situation that students can't program. We could have students actually learn how to program and focus those lights. We could have students learn how to program sound. Um that would make it so the acoustics in the space are appropriate, so audience members can enjoy at the current level of what technology makes available. Um I do want to mention the total budget because you're probably wondering how much is it going to cost? Um a new facility would cost far more. What we're looking for is um a budget of between three to four million dollars. We are coming to the city today to ask you to be a partner. Um we recognize that we have a responsibility to gain as much momentum as possible on this project. Um we have been continuing to do our homework and even Friday, um we learned that the flooring, the ninety-six-year-old Douglas fir flooring that's in the auditorium where the audience sits, um the nail bed is coming up from underneath it. And so we have a diligence that we must fulfill on ensuring that we make it so that the next hundred years, you know, in a hundred years, they're going to say they did a good job. Um so for example, we'd like to replace that with maple floor, which will last longer. In fact, the stage floor is made out of maple and so it is in far better condition. So we mentioned this to you, just to give you like the taste of that. Um and with that, I also want to mention that eighty-five percent of our advisory committee has pledged towards that one hundred and seventy-plus thousand dollars there. Um we've had a few industry members provide sizable donations and sizable pledges. Let's move on. You might wonder why the city should contribute. Um I personally did the analysis of the use of the auditorium. Forty percent of it is used by, and when I say it, I mean the use, the rental of the facility is by local community groups. When we think about um what it means to community members to be our partners, you know, this, this place has um a really soft spot in the heart of the community. Um it is the only facility within the city limits that can accommodate as many as two hundred and ninety folks as audience members. So in terms of what it provides, it's unique in that respect. I also want to mention that the nature of our relationship with our advisory committee, um it's not a one-and-done where I'm concerned. I look at it like we have a responsibility to collaborate and to ask for input, to ask them, hey, what do you think about this kind of seat, for example? Um and you can see a wide variety of organizations, including post-secondary partners, um because we do have a responsibility to ensure that our students are prepared to go onto whatever it is they're interested in. Along with that line, I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl. She'll tell you a little bit more about the timing.
Yeah, so we're on a very tight timeline. We do have to submit our grant by December first, which means we need to have final pledges by November twentieth in order to know what we're asking the state for. Um again, we're here asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is a unique opportunity. It is a competitive grant. Um and the more partners we actually have and pledges we have look very good for the grant ask of the state. Um so that's what we're asking for from you all today.
Just also want to mention that we know this aligns with a number of the goals for the city of Ojai. Um obviously, arts, culture, and recreation funding, but also the infrastructure. One of the things we are dedicated to is ensuring safety in the space. And so asking ourselves, for example, the electrical panel, uh that needs to be upgraded. That needs to be upgraded so we can be safe and ensure that when we turn on lights for each production, we don't short out the space. But it also ensures that we don't actually accidentally have a fire. So we want to be really thoughtful about that. Um and then ultimately, we do want to encourage us all to consider how we can partner. Um one of the things we do want to ensure is that we, we want to have a way to sit down and discuss the potential for a master joint use agreement with the city. Um and I think this, you know, is reasonable to say it's not just about the auditorium. Obviously, there's conversation to be had about multiple spaces. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I'll, I'll just say one thing, which is um I attended a meeting on the twenty-second where this was proposed in detail and thought it did match our goals. Now, I will say the reservation I had was my preference would be, I would, or some of us would come with a proposal that we would sit on, it would go out to the community, and then we would come back in two weeks or a month and then vote. We don't have the time for that. But um that is the way that I'm hoping that we do work is we have the time to think about it. But I, I bring it to the colleagues here to say, you know, here's this timeline and might we consider it? So any questions for these guys before we go to public comments? Yes, please.
So I had a question, thank you for your presentation. So let's say, so you, you said the, the funds are only due approximately one year. Uh if the state, so we, it's, we don't know for sure if, if the state's going to accept it. What if, now this is just like hypothetical, worst-case scenario, what if there is some kind of major disaster and the city doesn't have that funding? Is it legally binding?
No, we don't see it as legally binding. Um a year is a long way out, so lots of things happen, including perhaps the district has more money that it could allocate, you know, depending on what happens in, in our different funds. So um you're not on the hook for it, but it is, you know, definitely considered um, you know, pledged to us so that we can be confident in how much we're asking the state for.
And a follow-up question to that. Let's say you apply and you don't get the matching grant, but you're going to proceed with the fixes that you need. I'm presuming you are requesting all of the pledges, you'll continue to request the pledges.
I foresee that we would come back to you with a proposal at that time. I don't think, you know, we would actually say that to anyone who had pledged. If you're pledging, you're pledging under the assumption that we're getting the grant. We will know around March first if we've received the grant.
Okay.
But we also want to allow a six-month timeline thereafter for the request of those as actual dollars. But I absolutely understand the challenge of a pledge is that it's a good faith commitment.
But I absolutely understand the challenge of a pledge is that it's a good faith commitment, but we also, we know real life happens.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that happening, but just wanting to cover all bases. Yeah, and I hope you get the grant too.
It's a healthy question.
Any more questions before?
Yeah, actually for council, you agree that if we do a pledge, there's no binding aspect to the pledge?
We would need something in writing to that effect, of that the city, based off of resources, we have a clause that we can include in contract, that basically the city at the time the money is due, if we don't have the resources or the budget to do it, that we won't make it, but.
That'd have to be a big deal. That's a fair question though. Any questions?
I'll listen to public comments.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I have first Kim Maxwell, please, then Sven Shelgrim, and then Bill Miley. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the Ojai City Council members and staff. And good evening to all my friends and neighbors from around the Ojai Valley. It is a pleasure to share this little valley with you. My name is Kim Maxwell, and I have been launching stories loudly and unapologetically in this little town for about 33 years now. I am a co-founder of the Ojai Playwrights Conference, now in its 29th year, and I am the founder and principal of Kim Maxwell Studio. I am here tonight because I am throwing my whole heart and soul behind this breathtaking and her, this incredible effort to upgrade. I mean, it's such a wonderful project, to upgrade our beloved Matilah Auditorium, and I am hoping to convince you to do the same. Our auditorium is a gem of a building, but she has fallen into disrepair over her almost 100 years of service to this community. I have seen everything on that stage, from adorable and terrified kindergarteners in ballet recitals, to Broadway actors reading their brand-new words of Pulitzer Prize-winning playwrights. It has been home to more town hall meetings and benefits than I can possibly recount. Matilah Auditorium is a part of the tapestry that makes Ojai, Ojai. Holding hundreds of people at a time, she has always stood for the community having a voice, and we need that now more than ever. And in this moment, when there is a matching grant to do a serious amount of heavy lifting for us, this is the very best moment for us to invest in the voices, hearts, and talents of our friends and neighbors. Please, please join the multiple organizations and dedicated humans devoted to upgrading, maintaining, and filling the four walls of this invaluable community landmark with joy, excellence, and opportunity to reach for something maybe even a little further than we think we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Sven Shelgrim, please, Bill Miley, and then Leann McDonald.
Thank you.
Hello.
To the mayor, Mayor Protem, city council and staff, and the community, for this opportunity to speak in support of Agenda Item Number Nine. I'm the director and president of the Ojai Film Festival. I'm also on the board of the Ojai Art Center, and I've been on the boards of OPAT and the Ojai Art Center Theater Group. I've developed and produced and experienced in the audience content in the Matilah, in different formats, for eight or nine projects over the past six years, probably providing 50 rental days. It's a unique venue that we don't have anything like in the valley. We've got lots of 80 to 120-seat venues. We've got the Playhouse with over 200, but this is close to 300, and it's a gem, even as it stands right now, but it deserves to be upgraded. It could provide benefits for residents, visitors, and tourists. It's a great location, ideally placed for students, mentors, professionals, and elders. This proposal would result in an amazing creative laboratory for development, training, and presentation. This would be a state-of-the-art and creative support that would be a magnet for resident industry veterans, people who live here, who kind of stay off the beaten path, but who would come out and join visiting professionals and experts to help develop projects and train our students and enhance our audience experience. There's a lot of new visionary media opportunities coming in immersive projection, in interactive cross-collaborations with theater, dance, music, gymnastics, that we could work into this facility. And the education and career training of all these formats, as well as the business aspect of teaching students how to run this type of operation, would be huge. This could be staffed by students with some training and mentor support, but they could learn about the business of entertainment and performance, as well as doing it firsthand and developing their own project. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Miley, please, then Leann McDonald, and then Larry Stengel.
Hello.
Hi.
I was born three years after 1929, when this was rebuilt. Considering what I look like and how I function, I could also use modernization.
Oh, you're coming to us for some money now?
Tourism provides much of the economy of our city. The art elements located within the city, and those brought into the city, are key elements that create attractions for our tourism economy and benefits our city residents and valley residents. Our commission was recently granted by council, a local grant funding budget for the new year of $100,000, triple the previous year, all because of this valuable community artist element. Plus council goals and tactics are also on the art issue. The above, as I view it, creates the foundation for considering the district participatory request. Modernization is the official term they use in the requested letter. Such potential funding opportunity does not occur every year, only occasionally according to the author. This funding, Career Technical Education Facilities Grant, requires a one-to-one match. The district has portioned more than $900,000. The total is three to four million. My connections to the Matilah Auditorium, including having my three children attend it, beyond Topatopa and Nordoff. Also, I have a connection to the 1929 architect Roy Wilson. As both my wife and, my wife Cookie and I knew Zellma Wilson. So, city tourism general fund monies are lovely and abundant. They certainly help our government function, measure she-funds, c-funds, or capital improvement programs. Money to modernize the Matilah Auditorium fits the framework of strengthening our arts community for now and long-term futures, a great investment of tourism revenue. By contributing to the grant shows the state, community, and city support, and adds uniqueness to their proposal. I would hope your council would meet the state's pipeline.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. I'll take you out to lunch whenever you want, pal. Leann McDonald, please, and then Larry Stengel.
Hello, city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this measure. I am a community volunteer, a supporter of Nordoff High School and the arts education there, and I'm also the parent of two students who both benefited from the arts education at Matilah, at Topatopa, through our community organizations, and under the tutelage of Bill Wagner, Kim Hoy, and John Hoy at our high school. I encourage you to pledge as much as you possibly can towards this project. This is the foundation of building not only our community relationship with the school district, but showing your promise to the children of Ojai, that you believe in them as the next generation of professional performers that can come from Ojai and return to Ojai with their craft. Kim Hoy and her management of the career technical pathways at Nordoff, she has opened doors for so many students to learn the craft in ways that they can walk out of Nordoff High School and into a profession that will pay them, not necessarily needing to pursue a BFA or even a BA in the arts from a four-year university. They have the skills to do that because of the training and the on-ground expertise they've been able to gain. Now, if we want to continue that promise to our students, to give them that true pathway, we need to support them with industry-standard equipment, with industry-standard opportunities, or we will be sending out our students into an avenue where they can't compete. And I know that that's not what we want as a city, that's not what we want as a community who is known for its upholding the arts as a foundation for what we are based on. So I ask you, for the youth of our community coming from, oh yes, coming from our elementary schools, coming through Nordoff High School, as they embark on their performing arts journey, support them with a modern industry standard and safe facility that they can enjoy and master these performing arts, and master these technical skills to take out in the world, and enrich all of us in our own lives. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Larry Stengel, please. Hi.
Whatever they said, again.
Cool.
This is a good thing. I would love to be here for the 100th anniversary, and I want to be here when Bill's here, and when he's, when I'm his age.
Don't we all?
Yes, really. My daughter was in community theater. She went into corporate work. She now is the founder and CEO of her own company. And theater is a great skill, whether it's in voice, or how to act, or how to be aggressive, or do whatever you have to do. Technical skills are wonderful. Pledging the 250 is a good thing. If you gave them the 250, I think they'd be happier. Okay? Now, however, however, there is a weight to that. If 40% of the citizens of Ojai use the facility, and we also use other schools, the 250,000 could be given to them, and we can take control of the Chaparral Building as a long-term ground lead. So we could control Chaparral, they could have the quarter of a million, and we're good to go. Right?
He's negotiating for OUSD, right?
Or, and, or, and.
Yes, go on.
All the fees that are paid by Ojai citizens to use their facility could come out of the 250 until it's used up. So if I, instead of spending $10 to be on a city, a school tennis court, it would be nothing for a city resident. That way, at least, we're getting something beyond, hey, we feel good, this is good for our kids, this is great, but we're getting something concrete in return for the quarter of a million, instead of just laying it out. Because a pledge is fine, but they'd like to see the money so they could get going, because if they could do the electrical now, or they could do something now, it would be maybe a lot cheaper. So that's one way, and yes, I'm negotiating, because no one else is going to. Okay, you're right, I can't help myself, you're right. It's a habit. But seriously, I mean, you get something in trade. Getting Chaparral, control of those buildings for our nonprofits, for our businesses, for our citizens in the city, is not such a bad thing, because it's going to happen one way or the other, eventually. So why not just look into it now? Here's the money, that's fine, or come off a fee, something concrete.
Thank you, Mr. Stengel. Anything online?
Mayor, we have no raised hands for this item.
Wait, what? Oh, did somebody come online?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, let me just offer one thought, which is, the argument about that Matilah needs to be renovated, that's probably clear to everybody. The question seems to be more apt is, why should we help? And then, it seems to me, the answer is that, because you have 40% used by the community, I have rented it many times myself personally, and that our own, while OUSD spans further than the city, it also includes our city, so it's our people, our residents, our children, and our future, that the way that Mr. Miley pointed it out is, while we are in a very healthy sort of tourism situation, it does seem to me, it's an interesting way of taking that money and putting it into community life. And so that's what interests me about it, but that's my perspective. And as far as the negotiating about what we can get, I'm trusting them that, when they say that we want to negotiate something with us, because we are interested in other aspects of OUSD, and I'm sure that will come up, because our relationship continues to grow. But I want to hear from you. Yes, please.
I was just going to say that, you know, I think there are lots of opportunities to look at what a joint use agreement would look like. For example, look at having classes through the Parks and Rec Department for theater, for music, for, you know, we've had community, I've had community members come to me and say, we'd love to have an intergenerational choir running through the Parks and Rec program. So this would open up, this would expand, the partnership could expand the capacity for that. We could also look at city events. We could look at organizing or arranging, you know, to Larry's, I like the way that Larry suggested this or proposed this, but, you know, in the same way that we offer legacy events, the use of Libby Bowl, perhaps there's some kind of agreement we could have for granting organizations like the Film Festival or the Music Festival, for example, you know, collaborations with the auditorium. And so these are just things that I've been thinking about, because I have heard questions from community members of, what are we getting, I mean, what are we getting for this? I personally think there is a lot that we're getting with the career development for students. You know, I was a theater person, I was a theater major, and, you know, in a similar way of what we heard with the aquatics program, my theater education in high school and college just shaped my entire career. And, and in many ways, it, you know, it made me who I am. And, and so, thinking about giving that same opportunity to junior high and high school kids in our community is, I think, when I think about all the ways that we could spend our money, developing children for their futures is like going to be up at the top of, toward the top of my list. And, you know, this is a pledge, so this is something that we're, that we are committing to, and there are a lot of variables that could unfold between now and when the funds would be due. The funds would, I believe the funds would be due in the next budget cycle, is that correct? So they would be worked through that budget cycle? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding of the timing. But pledge now, money's due fiscal year '26.
Right, so this is something that could, that the budget committee, and that we as a council could look at next year too, and make other adjustments to make it feasible, so that it's not creating additional, you know, so it's not adding something new. We could, we could look at our, at the overall budget and see where we might be able to make some adjustments to accommodate that. But I just, I just... But I just, I feel, I feel like anything that we do for the kids of this community has a ripple effect. And it can help us to attract, having a state-of-the-art facility can help us to attract teachers who might be going to other districts, and keep students in public school who might be looking at private school because of the facilities or the opportunities that they would have. So I think it, it benefits us in a lot of different ways.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. So, I moved to Ojai when I was in the second grade, and I was coerced into being a trombone player. And, uh, continued with that through the 12th grade. So, I was thinking, if there's a list of people who spent hours on that stage, I'm so, I'm not at the top of the list, but I'm, I'm somewhere pretty high up there. Because I was, I was in three ensembles at Nordoff that played regularly at the auditorium, so I appreciate that it's a wonderful asset. I have reservations about the idea that we have $250,000 available without first assessing all of these things that we have. I've got two issues about our budget. One is, uh, I don't have a clear understanding of what funds we have that are not, like, already committed and, um, you know, liabilities and/or, you know, things that we have to pay for in the future. And then, secondarily, we've just created a list, finally got to the point where we actually have a list of priorities, and we haven't allocated yet what, you know, what those things are going to cost. And we haven't put this particular project in the middle of that. So, I, the mayor made the comment early on, that would normally be a thing. We'd take maybe a couple of months and more than one here, you know, one meeting to talk about. And that is, uh, something I'd want to have on this project. I understand that there's a time crunch. So, um, I'm, there was, you know, some giggling while Larry Steingold talked about what we could get in return, but that's exactly where my mind went on this, is, you know, what are we getting as a community if we invest in this? And, you know, and this is another time issue, is that I would really want that kind of spelled out. And I'm not sure exactly what the most valuable thing we could get as opposed to relating it to, uh, the Chaparral campus. I don't think I would go there, but, um, the, the concept of an agreement that allotted, you know, allotted the city a certain amount of time and use of that, uh, auditorium, and then, you know, we could potentially allocate to community groups, but it would be kind of the city's, um, thing to do. I would want to see something like that if I was to be, you know, supporting. I'd also want to have, you know, a really very clear and specific contract spelling out, you know, rights and obligations between the school district and the city. I'm sure it's too late, but I'd like to see the county. I'll, I'll say this almost every time we talk about something where we're funding something for the entire valley, you know, where's the county? And, uh, I don't think at this point I would commit to 250. And I'm about done, but, uh, I think I could probably support pledging 100,000. That wouldn't get them. I, I feel more comfortable with the idea that we, that we probably have $100,000, and that it might not, you know, kill off some other project that we decided is a priority of ours.
If I can just respond, I, I hear what you're saying, and I have a lot of those reservations too. What we, when we saw the list of the, the goals, we were, in my view, tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Harvey, we're still well within what Mr. Harvey had called the delta last year, it seems to me. And we also heard from Ms. Billings that there was something which we need to understand further, some further money. So, I guess, if you say the difference between 100 and 250 makes you more comfortable, they both seem like they're well within the comfortable range, but, um, well, you tell me if that's true, Mr. Harvey. I know you're, I'm, I'm not asking for the budget report, I'm saying, from the, from the revenue that you have seen so far, and anything over the 100% reserve, are you still seeing an ample margin there, or not?
It, it's likely you have that, with, with the accommodation of your 100% general fund expenditures, which you keep in your reserves. I'm, I'm going to hedge a little bit, because we, we haven't really, yet, as you've indicated, drilled down on every single tactic and put a real precise number on it. You've also made some commitments to funding areas, fire hardening, climate,
For sure.
etc. So, you know, you likely have it, but again, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage, and we did not, you know, I don't have that detail in front of me.
Right.
And there, and there's some variables, sorry, real quick.
Yeah.
There are some variables. This is an interesting economy that we're in. You know, we are continuing to see stable occupancy rates at our, at our hotels, which, you know, we rely upon greatly, but, you know, we just came off a huge weather event. That does impact visitation. There's just a lot of, I, I don't know, it, it's just, I just, I just need to tell, tell you all this so you think about it. These are things you have to consider.
The thing that I, when I received, when we received the public comment from Mr. Creasy, I expected him to say, "Don't do it," but when I saw the opposite, to do it, that made me, and he's on our Budget Committee, that actually gave me less reservation than I had had, to tell you the truth, is his recommendation to go forward.
But then there's also Renee Ross.
There's Renee's.
You know what I mean? Can I quickly point out?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. I just want to quickly point out that Mr. Creasy uses Matilaha Auditorium for his, he's Executive Director of OPAT.
For sure.
So, let's make sure that that's in the mix as far as the budget, etc., etc.
Oh, you're saying he's interested.
Well, I mean,
Sure, 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 of course, of course.
Fair enough.
Absolutely.
I mean, I just want, I think that that's, I think that that's worth noting if you're going to note the other things as well.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I, uh, thank you for saying that. I was thinking that and probably wasn't going to say that. But, uh, but my concern is that, and this is a long-term concern spread across a lot of issues, and, you know, that what we've been referring to as the delta, my understanding is that's money that we receive from the state or federal government related to, um, to COVID, and relief money that was, you know, provided. And it was, I, kind of, I, I, somehow it was, it was, my understanding is it was kind of funneled into a, a spot that was not as readily identifiable, but, but when Mr. Harvey came in, he identified that money.
Yeah, I, I just, so I just would say this, just to clarify, I, I regret using the term the delta, but let's, let's characterize it a little bit differently. So, in general, over the last two years, your revenues have exceeded your expenditures. You've underspent, you've had some positions that have gone unfilled. We've had some projects that we weren't able to, to realize. We've still accomplished a lot, but that's, that's the majority, well, and, and our local visitor-based economy has performed well, and you've brought on some more restaurants, and you've brought on, you know, a new hotel. So that's, that's kind of, it's not so much federal government money that we've squirreled away, it's just that, you know, we're, we've done decently well, and we've not spent a huge amount of money. But, you've identified a large number of things that you want us to work on. And that's what I really just want us to be mindful of. We have nine goals with, you know, three to four tactics for each goal. Now, that's your decision. You, you are the policymakers. You can decide to spend that money however you wish. That is clearly your role, but it's my job just to tell you, you know, keeping at least 16, 17 million liquid on hand is not easy to do. We've done it. But you do have to be mindful that that's what you want to do, to avoid negative impacts from a downturn, which I would suggest, seemingly, you know, that we're so reliable, reliant, excuse me, on TOT in particular, and sales tax, it's, it's very, very important. So I don't, I don't have a, my guess is you probably could, could afford that number without dipping into that 100% reserve. But again, I really want to talk about, you know, how you've talked about, I want to spend 100,000, excuse me, a million, you know, a million dollars on this, I want to spend a million dollars on that, okay. I've got this list of tactics. I don't have, for instance, I mean, I don't know how much a community siren or two of them costs, I have an idea. I don't, I don't know for sure.
That's fair.
So that's, that's just why I just need to tell you that. And then on top of all of that, let's not forget that you, you know, you fund a workforce, right? And when you're talking about things like benefits that are going up, and, you know, you may want to consider a COLA for your staff in the next fiscal year, because inflation continues to rise, your, your cost pressures are increasing too. So you just,
Fair enough.
You just have to keep all of that in mind. It's not a, a giant pool of money that we're
Fair enough.
drawing from, that's all.
So I just, money being a fungible, I guess the way I think about it is, if, if I think, oh, money from the TOT, that, in my view, it's something that we all have to, in a way, we have to tolerate tourism in a certain way with housing or rent prices and also traffic. And that's one way that we could say, one of the ways that we tolerate it for our economy is to take some money and put it back into the community and community life, such as the increase in the Arts Commission grant. So when I thought of this money going to OUSD, it was something more along those lines, in my mind.
Let me jump in and say one more thing, and the mayor pro tem brought this up, and I can give you another avenue that you can reconcile all this. I mean, it's a pie, and the pie only very incrementally grows. And so if you're comfortable with making difficult choices come budget time, because you've committed or you've spent in certain areas, it could, you know, you could be saying, well, uh, you know, maybe we don't have a motorcycle officer next year. Just don't, chief, I'm just, you know, or, or, or,
There you go.
Or maybe we, maybe we pave, you know, two less streets. I mean, that, those are things that cost a lot of money, but that's really what we do, right? Or maybe we don't provide this type of recreational programming. I don't know, but you just, you, you get to trade off, right? So you just have to be ready to make, you have to acknowledge that that is what comes when you make these types of decisions.
The timing's just unfortunate with,
The timing is, it would be wonderful to have gotten more.
If it was next month, because we're trying to get the Budget Committee together to do it, I feel bad, because I, I totally, you know, believe in OUSD and all of the you have to offer, but to me, just the, the timing with not knowing our finances and, you know, where we're at, like Mr. Harvey, things he was saying are, are big.
All right, so just to give you the counter, I feel like we're being overly cautious, I guess. Not to say I don't want to be cautious, but to say, what we have been living with is to say, there's a 100% reserve, which is almost unknown in cities, and then what we had read before was $4 million extra. Now, extra doesn't mean whatever, but what I would, what I would be unhappy with, I guess, in some way is, if we get to that Budget Review Committee and we say, next month, oh, we're at this 100%, oh, and then there's $3 million on top of the 100%, I would say, wow, we missed an opportunity.
And what if it's the flip, and then we're taking, you know, taxpayers' money, or what, you know what I mean?
But this seems like a good taxpayer spend, in my opinion, but, so.
We could go.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, she doesn't look fine. Leslie, I'm sorry, but you don't look so well.
You're, you're muted.
I'm fine. This is a very complicated question for me, because when I hear terms like, you know, developing kids for their highest potential, well, who doesn't want to do that? But there's 50,000 ways to do that, and is this the best way? And does it help the kids who have the least opportunity to fulfill their potential? And are we actually, you know, are we rehabbing a building and using, you know, technical education money for it? You know, how many kids are actually, if this is a career technical education, you know, money, how many kids are actually going to be, have their hands on the lighting board? Or are we worried about putting a floor down? You know, so to me, the process just has not worked at all. We're not supposed to bring things in and make a decision in three days. And I have heard the mayor many times say, "It sounds like the tail is wagging the dog." Well, there's never been a more example of the tail wagging the dog in that, you know, we have a time constraint, so let's do it. There's just, there's just so many things to this. I understand the wanting to get this money in order to make, to refurbish Matilaha. And in the process of refurbishing Matilaha, we're going to get career technical education out of it. You know, so I, I don't need to sort of recap, you know, like, I mean, we just gave money to the arts. What about career technical education for things like welding? Or, you know, other types of, or automotive, or the things that perhaps people who aren't born to the world of, you know, performance is, you know, the highest expression ever of anything? Maybe we should be looking at providing them with some more potential. And so, to me, this is very, very complicated, and I'm really not prepared to speak to it. I understand the reasons to do it. I understand the roadblocks. For me, like I said, process has not been followed at all. There's been no, we know, we don't even have, I would be more inclined if, for instance, we did get something in return, but yet there's been no, you know, sort of effort to make that happen for us in a deal, right? Or, or, so, I don't know. And, yes, we have money, yes, we should spend money, but we just decided that, you know, we weren't going to spend $100,000 on some part of fire hardening, because it wasn't a good use of the taxpayers' money. When I think about this, when I think about giving a gift to the people of Ojai, I think about a community pool, I'm sorry. That's a gift. This is a gift to a very particular audience, in a very particular way, to a very particular group of community members that we already support incredibly. Is there any other group, perhaps, that we could turn our eyes to supporting and help enabling? So that's where my crankiness and not feeling well and being flush and red is getting me. Sorry.
No, thanks.
So, so my question is, and I, I, I'm just reading tea leaves, you know, maybe there's not support for 250, but I, I wonder if a council member went mang. but I, I wonder if council member Wenang and, uh, council member Rule. There is an appeal for me that there would be matching funds if this happens. And so is there an amount? I, I threw out a hundred thousand dollars, that might be beyond what, but if there's some.
I would support.
If there's some amount that we could, you know, and end up doubling the amount that we're.
Could, could I just piggyback on that? You know, another, another thought, and I'm sure you've already contemplated this, like, correct? You could, you could commit a, a lower amount if you were so interested.
Who's phone?
Okay.
Oh, it's the girl that was sitting.
Oh, okay. You could commit a lower amount than what is requested. You know, we could come back. It doesn't mean that you can't still contribute to this project. It's not going to help with the matching funds, but you could, and we could do it in a manner that you're more accustomed to how we work, which is more of a, you know, concept review and here's a, here's a potential agreement and here's how it might work. And, and you could do it at a time when you know, you have a better idea, like I would suggest after, you know, the mid-year budget or even around the time that we're putting together the budget for, for twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we really have a good idea of what's, what's available and we've monetized all your tactics. I mean, so you could kind of have, you could kind of do a little bit of, of both where you're.
That sounds reasonable.
You are participating, but yet you're, you're doing so in a manner that's more comfortable and it's more, you know, we, this is, you're right. The, the way we like to do things is we, we always two or three-step it. That's just how we, we roll here and that seems to work better for us.
It's much better that way.
And I would like to add to what Mr. Harvey said. Um, if you considered it later, after act- having an actual view of what your budget is, that would also give you space and O U S D space to negotiate what the benefits are that the city would be able to get out of this agreement, right? Where, um, there's not space for that conversation right now because of how quickly they need an answer.
I have a question. Is, is there a way that we could, that we could offer some type, some type of language for their grant? Like that, you know, the city is invested or, you know, is, is, is there something, is there some kind of language that we could use that would say that we are, that we are contemplating a donation, but don't have a certain amount?
That would be, I'm, I'm interested in O U S D if you have a perspective on that.
My guess is that if they need to show a certain amount of pledges, that they write the, and I, I would encourage you from the question earlier, if, if you're going to pledge, like, we can add, yeah, pledge, like, there, because what will happen later on, which I, I wish I had added earlier is they're relying on that funding. So if, if you're pulling back the plench, they're still going to have to come up with that two fifty if the city doesn't. So just being thoughtful about that, like, there are things that we can do, but, um, at the end of the day, that's a real consequence if the city pulls the money back.
I wasn't imagining we would do that.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, I, I wasn't imagining that either.
Because isn't it like March fifth or something where you get your points to know if you move to the next level?
It'd be March first where we would know that. Um, we do have a portion of the grant where we have to indicate the percentage of individuals and members of the advisory committee, um, essentially our industry partners. So if the city were to sign on as a partner, um, without a pledge, it would actually reduce the percentage that we would have to place there.
I, I think what I'm hearing is what sounds like may happen is there will be a pledge of a certain amount and the possibility that when we understand our situation better and we can work with you in more detail, there could be more later.
It will be an ongoing project for us.
Okay, that's, that's useful.
I would just make a comment.
Yeah.
Okay, I would support a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
I would go up to supporting a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, probably. I feel really bad. I mean, I understand the need, so I would certainly support a hundred thousand.
That's reasonable.
If people could dig a little deeper and a couple go to a hundred and fifty, I would support that.
What do you guys, one fifty, what do you think?
So, uh, could, I have a, I have a question for council. Could we, you know, make the pledge contingent upon working out, um, an exchange with the, um, uh, you know, a bargain with the, uh, school district on how our investment contrib- you know, uh, gets converted into, uh, community access to the property?
Yeah, I would, I would say that you can do that.
And we, and we could do that as kind of an open language thing. We don't need to.
Yeah, I, I think.
Create the terms right now.
Yes, I, you could do that, understanding that, um, we would have to work that out in the future, but that the city in making the pledge is interested in some kind of public and community use or, um, something similar in exchange for the donation.
And then a second term I would want is that it's contingent on receiving something in the nature of a work plan so we understand what it's going to be, you know, what our money's going to be spent on.
What the plan will be.
And, and then my final comment is, is I'm, hundred is probably my threshold.
What's your threshold?
Um. My threshold would be, my threshold would be one fifty, but I'm, I'm also. Yeah, my threshold would be one fifty.
I, well, I like, I, everything you said, I would like one fifty and then I, all the other pieces you said, I would also like to see. So there's some, a great, there's an agreement that's open that we get something, we work with them about what this joint use agreement will be and that we understand we're privy to how the plans are working now.
Kim, is there an amount that you're?
I just can't, you know what I, I just with not knowing the finances, the budget, all of that stuff with, you know, our goals, our tactics. I, I just, I struggle.
And I, and that's where I was coming in tonight.
It's like, oh, my God, if it was just later, I think it could be, you know, a win-win for all of us.
I wish we didn't have that deadline.
Would a hundred be two?
I, I, I. Knowing with, yeah.
Uh, me, go, go one twenty-five and then I, we've got four.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't.
No, no, I'm talking to Mr. Whitman.
There's a certain symmetry to that because with the matching funds, assuming we get it. And I, and I would do that, and I, actually, the third condition would be that if the grant isn't given, that we're back to squ- you know, that doesn't mean that they can't ask us for money, but that pledge is off the table and, which is what they proposed anyways, is that we, uh, is that they would come back to us if they were proceeding without the grant money. So, uh, I'm still at a hundred.
I could do a hundred to make it a four, a four oh vote. Um, and I just want to say that you can learn welding in theater.
Of course you can.
My final project in stagecraft was welding a great big steel wall.
She's not amused.
Yeah, you can learn cooking too.
I, I, I think what, what I, I, I love there to be four, but I, it seems to me twenty-five thousand more would get them fifty. That makes a big difference. So I would like to propose that we have three votes at one twenty-five.
Uh, Mayor, to clarify, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we.
To include the terms.
And include the terms that Mr. Whitman included and one twenty-five.
Okay.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, I think maybe we've talked it out.
Mayor, let me, let's, let's recite the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mayor Gilman with a second by Mayor Pro Tem Lang to proceed as recommended with the pledge but for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, contingent upon working out an exchange slash bargain with O U S D with the how, with return on investment and contingent upon a work plan received. And if the grant is not received, um, the pledge will be off the table considering another option.
That they would return, uh.
I might, I might re- let's, let's redo that. Uh, uh, let's, um, I think there's three conditions that council that I heard. One, one was, and this is all, um, contingent upon an agreement with O U S D. And the agreement would contain three primary components. One, ensuring community use. Two, um, requiring the receipt of a work plan. And three, just the, the condition was O U S D has already agreed to, but just having it in the agreement that if the grant is not received, that the pledge is no longer valid.
And then O U S D would, would return, but maybe that doesn't have to be in the motion. They will do that anyway.
The pledge is not valid just means it is not, it's not valid.
Okay. No, that's good, thank you, fair enough.
So can you, can you repeat that back, Mr. Montgomery? Let's make sure we got that correctly.
Yes, for the one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and contingent upon an agreement with three parts. One, ensuring community use.
Agreement with O U S D, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Number two, ensuring the work plan is received. Number three, that the pledge, if no grant is received, the pledge is no longer valid.
Okay. I think that's, all right.
Roll call. Council member Whitman.
No.
Council member Meng.
No.
Council member Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
So we've been at this for two hours, let's take a ten-minute break and come right back. So we've been at this for two hours. Let's take a ten minute break and come right back.
There is no amount of reminding me what I'm supposed to be doing something that is gonna make me mad.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah, and I'm not afraid to send you a little text or anything like that too, so.
That's good to hear. Check, check. One, two. We're back. Thank you all, and we are on item number ten, receiving and file speed survey report and authorize an appropriation for the speed survey proposal provided by Phoenix Civil Engineering. Ms. Palmer.
Sorry.
Nope, good. Nope, great.
She was sitting here, I'm looking at her, I thought, oh!
Yes.
Ms. Palmer is going to deliver this, and we also have a couple other subject matter experts here with us, I believe.
We do, we do.
Yes.
So, first off, the recommendation is to receive and file this speed survey that we've done, and the second, second recommendation is to appropriate the funds, and I know that sounds a little bit backwards. We knew that this was direction from council to prepare this speed survey, so we went ahead and did it. We knew that you guys were, had directed us to do so. We used some other funding, but we would like to ask for the appropriation to cover the cost of this for now. So, so I have a slide presentation for you, and we've got, we've got a couple of consultants in the front row who I would like to introduce you to upfront. We have Mr. John Turner over on the right there with Phoenix Consulting. You've seen his name a lot, and his sub consultant is Mr. Andrew Yee, who is the traffic engineer.
Wonderful.
So, both seasoned veterans and have put this together, so they're here to answer questions. I'm gonna go through the speed survey results for you, and then I will turn it over to them for any technical questions you may have.
Thank you.
So, and this is again in response to the city council goals, community concerns, and furthermore, it's a requirement for us to have a speed survey on a regular routine basis. About seven to ten years is what we should be doing, a speed survey every seven to ten years, and we haven't been able to find any evidence of one in the last couple of decades.
Okay.
So it's time. So here we are, and I also wanted to make mention, this is a speed survey. We did not take traffic counts. This is not a volume survey. We can all agree upfront that over the years, I've lived here for almost thirty years now, and I can anecdotally say that volume has increased, and I think we are all in agreement on that. We've had numerous conversations, but that's not what this is. So, so I am just going to get start, well, get started. The background here, traffic safety, we know is a concern for the community. It's a concern for you folks as well. February of twenty-five, the city council authorized the hiring of a motor cop. We almost lost tonight.
Oh, you mean because of what was said? Oh geez.
He was offering it up.
I got it, I got it.
And then on October twenty-first of just this year, so just a month or so ago, the council authorized the formation of a traffic, a public safety commission, which we are moving towards. So, the council has taken steps to address traffic and address safety issues, and this is just one element of that. So why a speed survey? To comply, to comply with California vehicle code requirements for establishing enforceable speed limits. We need this in order to establish speed limits, reduce, or whatever the case may be. And it ensures that posted speed limits are both legally and defensible, and that is something that our police chief is very concerned about. If we post a speed limit, he wants his officers to win in court. And then under the California vehicle code, cities must base posted speed limits on a, on an engineering and traffic study, which is what we are talking about tonight. And, and please stop me along the way. You don't have to hold your questions.
Thank you.
So, some factors to consider in developing speed limits is spot speed and eighty-fifth percentile speed limit, which is the speed below, at or below which eighty-five percent of drivers travel, and I'm sure you've heard that term. That's what it means. Also, some other factors take, come into account, collision rates, mid-block crash data, level of pedestrian bicycle activity, land use and proximity to schools, and any other unusual conditions or hazards that a road may, you know, blind corners, et cetera. And, and a variety of other factors. So, it's not just technical data, collection of speeds. So, so previously, the eighty-fifth percentile was the gold standard for setting the speed limits. In two thousand and twenty-two, effective January first of two thousand and twenty-two, AB forty-three was approved, and so that allows a lot more flexibility for local agencies to set the speed limit. So you can generally reduce the speed limits below eighty-fifth percentile, not a lot below, maybe five miles per hour below or something like that, and, and I would probably defer to Ms. Anderson to speak about the, not, not right now, not right now. But if questions arise on, on the enforceability of that and whether or not AB forty-three could apply to some streets for us, and, and our traffic engineer would also speak to that. So. So, the survey data that I'll be presenting tonight, we, we collected data from twenty segments. We call them segments, so you'll see along Grand Avenue, there's three different segments along Grand Avenue, and just from street X to street Y, street X to street Y. But, so these are segments, and, and traffic data was, speed data was collected in those segments. Based on the information that we collected, the data we collected, the recommendation by the traffic engineer is to reduce the speeds on three streets, Country Club, Foothill, and Fairview. And I'll show you a map and, and we'll talk about that. And again, five miles per hour is what the reduction is recommended to be.
Thirty-five to thirty.
Yes, thirty-five to thirty, or thirty to twenty-five.
Or thirty to twenty-five, okay.
So, I know that this map is small, but I just wanted to sort of highlight the segments you can see around the city where the segments were, where the information was collected. So, throughout town, on all collector streets, except one with the exception of Quiyama. That's the only residential street. The default on all residential streets is twenty-five miles per hour. So. So, here's the first, first couple of segments that we surveyed. So Quiyama from State Route thirty-three to Del Norte, and I've got next to it, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-four, posted speed's thirty, and the recommended speed is thirty. We've got Del Norte to, on Ojai Avenue to Quiyama, and again, thirty-five, thirty, and thirty. I don't need to keep reading, you can read it as well. But, so those, the posted speed and the recommended speed are recommended to stay the same. So no changes there, but just illustrative of the areas that we have collected data. So we've got Quiyama, Del Norte to Chico, the eighty-fifth percentile, twenty-five miles per hour, that's what eighty-five percent of the people were driving. Posted speed, no posted speed limit, residential, so we would assume it's twenty-five. The recommended speed is twenty-five.
Can you pause on that one for a second?
Sure.
So, I'm, when I look at the chart and I see there's many places where there is the assumed speed limit is twenty-five, but there's no signs posted, so is the, does, do we take from this that the effort would be that we do post signs?
Indeed, yes. Yes, and that will be discussed later on in the slide, but I appreciate the question, yes.
Cool.
We do plan on installing speed limit signs.
Okay.
More, more, you know, more places.
Thank you.
And then we've got El Paseo, just parallel pretty much, in front of the school there. Eighty-fifth percentile is thirty and recommended speed is twenty-five, and that again would be the assumption that it would be twenty-five miles per hour.
Isn't right in front of Ojai Valley School to Ojai Avenue? It says fifteen right there for a minute.
On Ojai Avenue. On Ojai Avenue or on El Paseo?
No, on El Paseo. Like, right in front of Ojai Valley School, I thought it said fifteen, which is very weird.
I don't know, but I will know tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
There, come on up. This is Andrew Yee. He's our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Friend of Andrew Yee with the L S Y Enterprise. Yes, you're right. There's a warning sign. It's a yellow regulatory, which is regulatory white sign. So you will have regulatory sign and the warning sign near the school, so you can emphasize with a cross.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
No.
So the next two segments are on Country Club, from Ojai Avenue to Amber, and from Amber to the city limits line. Now, this is, this stretch here, the recommendation is to reduce the speed by five miles per hour. The posted speed limit is thirty-five, and we're recommending down to thirty. And again, we would, we would repost signs. We've got, now here is, we've got Fairview from the city limit line to Foothill, and there was a recommendation to reduce the speed there from thirty-five to thirty. And Foothill, and all the way down Foothill from, from Fairview all the way down to El Toro, I believe. Yeah, to reduce the speed down to thirty as well, from thirty-five. We've got Aliso from Foothill to Signal, and that's two segments. That's why there's two, two blue squares there, and that is just maintain the speed limit at twenty-five. And then we've got Signal from Oak Street all the way down to the Ojai Bike Trail, and you can see the eighty-fifth percentile changes a little bit. It was a little bit higher on the north side of Ojai Avenue, but again, the recommendation is to maintain. We, throughout this, throughout this entire study, we have not found excessive speed. Again, it's a speed survey, not a volume, and so they're two very different things, and we, again, we know about the volume.
Thank you.
So we've got Ventura, Ventura Street, and the eighty-fifth percentile was twenty-three miles per hour, and we're recommending it maintains at twenty-five. Montgomery, all the way, all the way down. Again, twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, and we're not seeing a whole lot of, you know, a whole lot of speeding going on there. And then we've got Grand Avenue. Now, this is the only area in town that we're really sort of seeing, I, I don't have a laser pointer here, but on the far east end here, from Golden West to the city limits line, you can see what the eighty-fifth percentile is, almost forty miles per hour. And, and of course, as, as you drive, as you drive west, it continues to, you know, sort of decrease.
Well, because it opens up when you head east like that.
It does, and it's like, yeah. So it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting, you know, data points here.
Yeah.
So, the key takeaways here, and, and the next steps is we would be coming back to you. This is, this is a, a draft report. We would like to file it and, you know, turn it into a final report. We would come back to you with a resolution to establish these recommended speed limits, and obviously, post signs accordingly. And any other recommendations you may have, or any concerns you may have based on this data, and then, of course, we would coordinate with the police department on enforcement updates, et cetera, and any possible field modification signage, et cetera. And then, and then the last step we would be doing, or simultaneously, we would be moving forward with this data on developing and creating a speed hunt policy, which is another one of the council goals and, and direction. So that will take some time, but this, we needed to get this information and this data collected first. That's kinda where we are.
That's great.
That's kinda where we are. So we're open for questions. I can answer questions, or either of our two consultants here can answer questions.
I'm just curious, when I look at the dates, you did the, the surveys Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and traffic changes, now it's like Thursday afternoon when the people are coming in for the weekends, and I was wondering, is it possible to have either, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday have? Cause I think it, it switches the makeup.
It does, and again, I just want you to keep in mind, we weren't counting traffic. We know that a lot more people come into town on Thursdays and Fridays. We could do that. I would, I would defer to Mr. Yee here to see if, I mean, there were some streets that he had to go out numerous times to even have enough cars to, you know, to collect data.
Typically, when you do volume count, you usually use Tuesday through Thursday during the weekday, because Mondays, there's a little bit of a difference, Monday and Fridays, traffic occurs different, occurs different. So that's what we do. However, when you do speed, it's random. People do speed no matter what, or whatever speed, they're comfortable going any given time. So, this sample is your picking sample, so you're indiscriminately picking the sample size during the day. Sometimes, I have to go out there early in the morning because I think Country Club, I couldn't get any samples. So I end up going four times in one second. If that answered your question.
I was gonna say, some of the streets, like Country Club is one that you could say tourism would definitely affect that street, but then there's other streets like Grand, wouldn't be nearly as affected by tourists. So most of the streets I'm seeing on the map would not be tourist influenced as much. Some, only a couple.
My thought is that, you know, when traffic's coming in on the weekend, and then being a resident wanting to get from A to B, when it's gonna take a half hour to get through the arcade, they're gonna go.
I get what you mean.
Up Grand, they're gonna go, you know.
Yeah, you take the back.
To get to where they need to go.
I get what you mean.
To avoid the traffic.
You're right.
I think that's, I don't know if, if you see any of that, Chief.
So I think, the way I understand the issue, if I understand what the traffic engineer said, is that although your counts are gonna vary, the driving behavior is not. And I think your question is, well, if it's primarily tourists, or if there's a much richer percentage of tourists, is that gonna affect that assumption that the speeds are gonna be the same? So I'm, I'm interested in if you can just clarify a little more. So the question is, I, I think I understood you to say that from a traffic engineering perspective, the assumption is that the speeds are gonna be the same no matter what day of the week it is. And I guess what I've understood the council member to ask is if we've got a influx of tourists on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and they don't drive like the local residents on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Is that, I mean, have you already kind of looked at that, and it just doesn't happen that the, that the speeds are different?
My experience, there's no data that supports that either way. They're either driving faster or slower. So it's hard to, hard to answer that question.
Or you, it seems to me you could, you could say, if everybody's gonna take the Arbolata because they don't wanna go downtown, then the volume goes up, but I would suggest the speed either remains the same or possibly goes down with more volume through the Arbolata, let's say, or on Grand.
So, let me make some argument to you. Let's say, if you're driving Sunday, are you tend to drive slower or fast on Sunday versus Monday when you go to work? And there's much lighter traffic on Sunday, correct? So it's very difficult to.
Not, here there's more traffic on Sunday.
Being a tourist town, they come in Thursday afternoon, so the bottleneck, it starts at the Y and it goes through town. The weekends, forget going through, and then, you know, they leave.
My vote is don't drive.
So there's a time when we don't have the bottleneck?
Just to say, Chief, most of your tickets are going to residents, correct? That's what I heard you say at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks.
Yes, so I, I would say what we're seeing is those Thursday or through the weekend, more tourists coming into town. It's the locals that know the side streets, but the volume goes up, so I would argue, you know, we see a lot of more stop sign violations, but we don't see the speed necessarily going up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Just think common sense, higher volume, that, that's actually gonna lower speed.
Yeah, no, higher volume would lower speed, but you're seeing more infractions through the neighborhoods on the weekends.
There's other infractions of locals.
That's good.
Trying to get through the streets faster, but they're not necessarily speeding.
Okay.
It's usually the stop sign.
That's great. That's a really nice picture. I mean, it's a clear picture.
But did you catch, sorry to interrupt, but did you catch the last part of what the, what the chief said with that, and I think this is.
Which was?
Key. Go ahead and say that last part of the statement. The infractions are.
Oh, the, most, the high infrac, or the high number of violations are the stop sign violations.
Yeah, yes.
Just making sure.
People are still trying, trying to get through the streets quicker.
Very sure.
But they're getting through, they're rolling through the stop signs quicker, not, not, not the speed.
I get it.
Good to know.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So, question whether we're talking about stop signs tonight?
We weren't specifically talking about stop signs. We're, we're kind of focused here on this traffic study, but we can talk about that at a later date. It's, yeah, for sure.
I would think if he has a question related to that.
Oh, for sure.
Well, I, I did get a couple of calls, and one of the things they mentioned is that there was an accident at, near Eucalyptus and Foothill recently, and the perception of this resident that was talking to me was that that long downhill stretch of Foothill with actually no real inner, it kind of encourages people to really go. And, and, and another person talked to me about the stop sign that we placed at Church and Quiyama. They perceive that there's been a big change in, you know, reducing speed, but. They perceive that there's been a big change in, um, you know, reducing speed, but also making it a lot kind of safer or comfortable to make the turn from Church onto Kuyama.
Positive change.
I have heard that as well.
Positive change.
Yes, I have heard that as well, that that, that stop sign there has been.
It used to be a straight shot, and now it's easy.
And then uh, maybe a little more mixed on the ones we placed on Grand, but.
Yeah.
Because there's some folks that, you know, but this person was convinced, trying to convince me that people, for the most part, support those stop signs because they do slow traffic.
Mostly, that's true.
And, you know, we are completely in support of doing that too. Not a problem. I mean, it's this, this whole discussion about safety and, and whatever we can do, safety measures.
Absolutely.
Uh, so I brought up at one point in time, the concept of speed humps. And you mentioned that in your report, and I, I'd, I'd love to have one or the other of our traffic engineers talk to us about the difference between a speed bump and a speed hump. Cause, cause they're, well, the, it, I, I kind of understand the difference. But uh, I've seen the speed hump used in different communities much more so than speed bumps on regular residential streets, so. And I understand that there's some concept that uh you can design the hump for the speed that you want people to slow down to and could.
Andrew, would you like to come up and speak to that?
Well, cause that's what's coming next, right, is what we're gonna do after this study today.
We, we, we don't talk about speed bumps anymore because those are a little more harsh to go over. So uh nowadays, you're, you are going to a little bit gentler, kinder speed hump, but it impacts how fast you're going. So the faster you go, it's gonna have a more impact and, and you go over. And also, you also design it such that you have a slot in the middle of it so that uh usually fire engine can go through without really slowing down significantly. So those are the things uh get into the design.
Can I ask one question while you're here or for either one of you? So what determines where speed humps will be placed?
Well, there's a lot of different criteria that we can, and that's what we would be developing.
Okay.
We would be developing that. The County of Ventura is um, is the standard that we've used before. But there's other standards. So we would be looking at a variety of different placement and, and, yeah, a, a lot of details.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any more questions before we go to public comments? All right.
Um, I actually have a question.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, so on, on one of your slides, uh Lindy, you mentioned that there'd be possible field modifications. And I know that I brought up before uh the traffic calming measures that San Francisco instituted uh during COVID when they wanted to make the streets more walkable and bikeable, where they didn't just clo- they didn't close the street, but they did a sort of um, I won't say gentle, but sort of a, a rerouting by putting up a sign, for instance, it said, you know, we'd like to have our, our neighbors walk this street. Could you please take another, you know, take another street? And I'm wondering if those kinds, if, if that's what you mean by possible field modifications? And could you investigate those um more subtle ways to divert or calm traffic?
Um, we can certainly, all or anything is, is on the table right now in terms of traffic calming. And we could certainly look at that. I know there's been conversations about, you know, some, some field modifications on these downtown streets that we have. You know, the downtown grid, gridded streets. So, yeah, I mean, anything and everything is up for discussion at this point.
Because I, I had, I think I mentioned it in a session, but perhaps it was only with uh Mr. Harvey about those kinds of tactics that San Francisco used very successfully to get uh sort of compliance and understanding from the citizens um about wanting to live, you know, in harmony with those who would want to walk and or bike or had kids or whatever, without closing the street per se.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll go to public comments. First, Adam Keir, please, and then Tina Bromand, and then Alan Mintz. Thank you. Hi.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor, council members. Um, I am Adam Keir. I'm a resident on Kuyama, and I'm gonna be very brief because we're all tired.
Thanks for toughening it up.
So you have, I have a, a letter, I think that's in um the binder, and I won't rehash that. Just one point that I want to make, and that's with respect to AB forty-three. And Lindy did a really good job of summarizing those provisions that uh were, were enacted in two thousand and one. Um, and I'm only gonna speak about Kuyama. I don't know about the, the other streets. But as, as you saw in the presentation, the eighty-fifth percentile speed on Kuyama was twenty-five miles per hour, and the recommendation is twenty-five miles per hour. Obviously, the AB forty-three tools were not uh taken advantage of in setting that speed limit. Also, as Lindy explained, the, the AB forty-three allows you to reduce the speed um when you have uh what they call a safety corridor, which is that's, you know, as was summarized, if you have narrow streets, blind corners, if there's excessive or intensive use by cyclists, pedestrians, if there've been um bad accidents. And Kuyama has all of that. We had a woman killed on her bicycle by, struck by a car just a few years ago. Uh, my neighbor has had um cars crashing through her uh yard at the end of Kuyama where it's been at Del Norte uh three times in the last two, two years. Um, and you have, uh, we have no sidewalks. So all of the pedestrian activity, all the bicyclists, bicyclists, dog walkers, everybody is forced into the traffic lane. So, you know, considering that, I just don't know how the recommendation can be to, to leave the speed limit at twenty-five. Let's take advantage of the tools in the toolkit, lower it. It's not gonna solve all of the, the traffic problems, the safety problems on Kuyama, but it's, it's a really good start. Uh, one other point, you um, you, you mentioned that the speed limit is not posted on Kuyama. It is posted. There's at least three speed limit signs.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, Tina Bromand, Alan Mintz, and then Larry Steingold, please.
Hi, everybody. I am Tina Brumand and I'm.
Sorry, thank you.
Ready?
No, I mispronounced your last name, and I appreciate the correction.
That's all right. It's my husband's last name. My last name's Tozer.
You should have wrote that on the card, man.
That's all right.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, I am here to talk about traffic. I was at the MAC meeting last night, and we have had a long, ongoing traffic problem. I want to say first and foremost how much I appreciate the Ojai City Council. I have worked with you guys, different people in these seats, but for a long time. And what I will say is the city of Ojai has been so responsive, putting in the stop signs on Creek Road at Ventura Avenue and wherever else going into, they've been a big help. That is a deer-heavy area. We have lots of deer crossing through. We haven't had a lot of deer die in that area. Guess what? They're dying down further on Creek Road, which is not your problem, but it is all of our problem, right? We have one valley. We have an Ojai area plan that is actually going to be changed by the County of Ventura as it relates to our traffic policy in an effort to eliminate the requirement for businesses to conduct traffic impact studies as they go in. It's a problem. I think many of you have heard or have said and stated, not only do we have a speed problem, we have a congestion problem, and no one is working on the flow of traffic. People are making their own solution, which is going through stop signs like a California stop, trying to get out. It's not safe anymore. I recently visited Chico, California, and had my husband drive me through Paradise, California, because I watched The Lost School Bus on a plane. That movie, we all need to watch that movie and get really serious about how many people are we packing in this valley? Because what the County of Ventura would like to say, or for all of us to believe is that the, that the city of Ojai put limitations on development because we had a traffic problem. That's actually really false. The city of Ojai and the community of Ojai put a limitation on development because we acknowledged long ago that we had a traffic problem that is at a level F failing grade. We continue to have that same problem. We do not work on flow. We work on reducing speed limit. That's great. I want the speed limit reduced on Creek Road, certainly. I want no passing. I want stop signs. I want all of that. But what I really like better is that we all get together as a community to really dive into this. Because it's really interesting to me that we actually recognize that we have a congestion problem. Stuff's backed up to Villanova Road, but we're spending fifty grand on speed studies? I understand they need to be done, but they haven't been done for like.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alan Mintz, please, Larry Steingold, and then Michelle Thomas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Along with Mr. Keir, I'm a resident of the Ojai Street between Del Norte and Sierra. Uh, at, or, excuse me, uh, Chico. That portion of Kuyama is very narrow, very winding, blind corners, no sidewalks. It is not safe to drive there. It is not safe, it's not safe to walk your dog, bicycle, what have you. There's children living there. I recently took, you know, a little examination uh to walk to our mailbox, which is on the bl- uh, which is on the inside of a blind corner. Standing at the mailbox, people coming around the corner have less than a second to see us. And if you've got somebody who's looking at their cell phone or talking to their children, my wife or I are gonna get hit by a car. There was a, a study done, I believe, two years ago that looked at the volume of people driving on Kuyama. This is a ci- this is, we, when we had a conversation with uh members of the city council, police chief, Lindy, uh, the average traffic for a residential street is about two hundred cars a day. We have two, over two thousand cars a day. And that has gone up in the last several years because of the congestion at the, the thirty-three one fifty Y. We need to both reduce the speed uh because this, the streets are, the condition of the street, the characteristics of the street don't support twenty-five miles per hour. And also try and discourage people from using that as uh a thoroughfare between Miners Oaks and, and Ojai. It just, the, the, the street can't support two thousand cars a day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry Steingold and Michelle Thomas, please.
Good evening.
Hey.
Thank you for doing the study. All right. The, um, shouldn't say, I come to speech. The um, Arbolaata. I know. Ar- Arbolaata should have been in the study. Right? Um, there are no sidewalks. Even if you put in sidewalks, people aren't walking on the sidewalks. We live on Pleasant. Nobody walks on the sidewalks except three-year-olds with bicycles. Everybody else walks in the street, even with all the sidewalk. We have speed bumps on Drown. We have one street that makes no sense on Daly, which is thirty, and everything else is twenty-five. Not that I'm, I lived there, I don't live there, but still, it's, it's not consistent. Um, we need speed humps, speed bumps, something in the Kuyama, in that area, the Arbolaata, bring it down to fifteen miles an hour. I mean, we created the problem. You have two streets coming into town. Now we aren't the, oh, is it ATP two, which will shrink Ojai Avenue even smaller, maybe with bumps in here and there. And the traffic's just gonna get slower. And for, and people, locals will go more and more, go through Kuyama. They have no choice. I mean, we come in last night at nine o'clock at night, uh, Ojai Avenue's backed up. I'm not taking Kuyama, but still. So I think what you're doing is wonderful. Please do more. And people speed when there's no stop signs, whether it's on Kenyatta or Foothill or coming down Signal. But stopping on a hill with a stop sign is gonna cause more people to go through the stop sign. Also, right-hand turn, uh, no right-hand turn signs either need to be enforced or removed because nobody's stopping, very few people are stopping at the one on Signal. Right, on the, on the north side. Right, they just aren't. They don't, well, now, now they can actually see the sign. But in general, they're not, they're not stopping. They just go. And there's, and they're doing a great job with the two lines in front of Vons. People still are muscle memory. Twenty years of turning into Vons, that's gonna happen forever. Anyway, but thank you. Keep it up. Pay them and put them onto speed humps or speed bump.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Michelle Thomas, please.
Hi. Hello, um, I'm sorry, I'm winging it again tonight. First, um, I'm Michelle Thomas. I live on Grand between Mercer and Gridley. So yes, the stop sign has been very helpful. Thank you ver- and I wanted to personally thank everybody on the council, city manager, staff, Ms. Palmer, police chief, everybody for the work on this issue. It's scary out there when you're walking your dog, and I appreciate it. I see this as a public safety issue, as an animal safety issue, and an environmental ambience issue. Uh, it'll one day also be an evacuation issue. Uh, the city is connected to the greater county. Issues originate in the county and come into our city and then leave out the county. So I'm just find myself wondering, why are we spending fifty-two thousand to the co- like, the county, are they monitoring? I don't know. I'm catching up. I've been out of town for a while, but there was a terrible accident on Creek Road just last night. I'm sure you're aware, or maybe you're not, but it's just scary. I just want to again point out the speeding starts and ends in the county. We have a terrible Ingris and Egris issue. I left here in May. It's one lane on uh the Denison Grade. It's still one lane on the Denison Grade. When fire trucks have to come in and people are leaving, what happens then? San, the uh San Antonio Creek Bridge is still super narrow. How are fire trucks gonna get in when all the tourists who don't know even where they're going are leaving? Um, back to speeding, I've personally been affected. We had a house in the Golden West area almost get run into by a car that blew a turn. So one of these days, you might look, I see uh Golden West turning into a shortcut for, probably for locals avoiding the traffic on the weekends. Okay, uh, that's it. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the attention to the issue.
I appreciate that. No raised hands on Zoom, Mayor. Okay, wonderful. That does, they're reminding me of something. Um, if you, that parking lot that's right next to Libby Park that says only right-hand turns? I was, which is great. I do, I've, I've thinking, oh, we should have that on all the parking lots so that people aren't waiting to make a left or jet, or jetting out. Anyway, side note. All right, so.
I, I do have a question.
Please.
Was the speed study done in part because there has been discussion over an extended period of time about going to a maximum twenty-five speed limit for the entire city?
The speed limit was, the, the study was done, it was multi-pronged. One, that it's been a discussion amongst you folks for a very long time. Uh, secondarily, um, we haven't had one done. Again, we needed to do one. It was time to do a speed study. So um, not, not that issue specifically to reduce every speed down to twenty-five. That was not the real driver of this.
But third.
But it.
There was also interest in developing the speed bump or speed hump policy. In order to have one, you have to start with data.
To know what the, the proper speeds are.
Okay, that, that explains a lot.
Right, exactly. The follow-on to that question, though, was um, I guess it's, it's a technical question of which I do not know the answer. If the council had said, we would love there hypothetically to be a twenty-five mile an hour citywide speed limit, is that possible? Is it allowed? I mean, that's a question that I don't know the answer to.
Andrew, can you speak to that?
If we wanted to go 25 miles per hour citywide?
Speed, speed, there, there is basic speed limits. So no matter what the speed is, you have to drive safely with the prevailing conditions. That's a basic speed law. You can arbitrarily set the speed limits. However, I don't think you can enforce it because it's not done properly done. Especially the, one of the reasons you do a speed survey to have effective enforcement. That means that police can use a radar unit to enforce speed. Otherwise, they cannot. You can speak to that. So I hope that answers the question.
I have, I have one more. So the AB 43 was mentioned. I did a little bit of reading about that, and my understanding is you can't implement AB 43 without a traffic engineer saying, whatever the speed you're selecting is the safe speed.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. That's an engineering, engineering's traffic survey. Are you talking about?
And so, well, so as we've seen, the listing of the different streets and the, and the, and the speed limits that are being recommended, that's the assessment of what is the safe speed for that street? And so if we go outside of that, we're potentially have some issues.
Well, potentially. But AB 43 allows us to reduce the speed. So the 85th percentile is set, and we can round down as well. It allows us to do a round down of about five miles per hour. So if the 85th percentile speed is, is 23, we can go down to 20. We don't have to go up to 25.
So if we were to say hypothetically, if we said, oh, as one mitigating measure for now on Cuyama was we lower it to 20, we could do that?
I believe so.
Is that correct?
Yes. Cuyama, there's a section, in the vehicle code section, when you have a narrow street, engineering study is done, and you can make a justification, you can go down, lower the speed limit to 20 or 15.
Okay.
And based on this study, the 50, 50th percentile speed is...
I have it right here, too.
22. So it, it is justifiable to reduce down to 20 miles per hour.
But you, did you, sorry, if I heard you, did you say it could even go to 15?
Yes, code allows that if engineering study supports that. But in this case, as I mentioned, the 50th percentile is above 20.
Okay.
And if we ask you to do that, you would, you're okay with the idea that you'd identify that as a safe speed for that street?
Yes, it's supported by code, vehicle code, so.
Yeah, and we've discussed this outside of the report, and, and he, Mr. Yee was comfortable recommending Cuyama to 20. So I mean, that could easily be included in this resolution as we reduce the speed on the other three streets as well.
So there's one other thing that was discussed besides speed bumps in the humps in the, in the Cuyama. Along Cuyama, and I don't know if we went anywhere with this, or if that's something maybe we look at in the future, but we talked about the idea whether there would be, it would be feasible and how much it would cost to do like a DG walking path that would run somewhere from like, you know, the Presbyterian Church and then all along Cuyama out to Del Norte. So that the folks in that neighborhood would have that kinda safe harbor, and you could walk your dog on a three or four-foot wide path.
That would be on people's property, like on one side?
Yeah, except for I think we have an easement to most, no?
So this is an interesting fact that is existing in many, many areas in the city. So the paving portion on Cuyama is somewhere between 19 and a half and 20 feet wide. So from the outside edge of the pavement to the other outside edge of the pavement, we have 50 feet of right-of-way there. We don't have an easement. It is our public right-of-way.
Okay, right.
It is our public right-of-way. We have every right to use 15 feet on either side.
Whoa.
Yes.
And so the challenge with that is, and that's throughout the Arbolata.
Okay.
And, and so we've, I've noticed, I can't recall the street, but there have been some property owners who have placed a DG trail on the frontage of their property. Now, and again, it's our public right-of-way. So we have every right to require the property owners to push back their improvements, about 15 feet. We would do it by survey, of course, and, and stake the front of, you know, their property line, i.e. our right-of-way line. And now we have this potential 15 feet for some safety improvements.
So did you say the street is at 19 or 20? So you're talking about two and a half feet per side?
It varies, but it's about 19 and, it varies between 19 and a half and 20 feet wide.
Okay.
If we wanted to put a four-foot wide path in, there's really no, you know, no question that we would.
No question that they would, we would have the access to that.
And so my, I would be really interested in, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about how much it would cost to, you know, kinda to figure all of that out. But I, I'm really interested in what the ultimate cost would be of developing that path. Cause I could see that, I mean, I might make our friends from Cuyama a little bit angry because we might, that might encourage more people. But if it became more of a pedestrian area, then, I mean, I could see people, and I know that there's a lot of people who walk the streets of Ojai extensively. We put a path in there, and I think it'd be a very popular path. So I'm just interested in what it would cost us to do that.
So I just would like to encourage us to get back on the subject of speed.
But it's a, I, I love the idea.
It sounds like, it sounds like sooner rather than later, an item needs to come back to allow for this space.
And that, that's all I was encouraging.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I just don't wanna get us too far.
I, I would encourage, though, 20 there. I, I, I would offer that now.
Well, maybe some mechanism, we could get this in front of council, would be we, we propose a project in our next year's CIP, a sort of a feasibility study, if you will, you know, of something like that.
On the path?
On the path. We come up with the, the limitations of what, are we talking about Cuyama? Are we talking about Del Norte? Which, which streets are we talking about? But maybe, maybe a feasibility study and look at just, you know, see what it would cost.
Sure.
I mean, we'll have to survey all the property. We'll have to come up with some sort of a design, et cetera. Then we'll work with the property owners because they gotta move their, their improvements out of the way, you know? So there's a lot going on.
It solves a lot of problems, even if we put speed humps there because there's no place to walk, even if there's any cars at all.
Right, exactly. They're walking on the street.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I address two things? So one, lowering all speeds to 25? Okay, okay.
I, no, 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 I wasn't doing, I was saying just only 20 on Cuyama, only with the engineers.
Okay, okay, okay. So we're good, we're good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Cuyama, okay.
No, no, it's cool.
No, we, we wouldn't be able to enforce that. It's a, it's a speed trap.
That's what the engineers said.
And then Cuyama, I, I would, I would just offer, wait until the traffic safety committees put together. And I, I think some good ideas might come together, and then we come to you with.
Guys, we can't hear in the audience, please. Thank you. Say that last thing again, please, chief.
I would wait until the tra, the traffic safety committees put together.
Okay.
And then let us really kinda brainstorm ideas about Cuyama, and then I think, and then, you know, come to you with that, so.
Yeah, and I think we could, just to follow up that, that could be a first quarter thing. You've already given us direction. I know the city attorney's office has already written the ordinance, so we can bring that forward.
Awesome. Wow, that's great. So then what you're asking for is to receive and file the report, and then also to allocate the 52,000?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to allocate the 52,000 and to receive and file the report. Do we wanna add to, to change the 20, the?
20 on the Cuyama?
Yeah, 20 on Cuyama.
Will you give that? I second that?
Thank you.
Coming, coming.
Coming, yeah.
That's next. That's next. You'll be, you'll be, will be among the first on the list. Okay?
Mayor Gilman, did I hear you're second on that?
I seconded, correct.
Roll call. Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
You're on mute, but you said yes, we think.
Let's wait.
Did you say yes?
Thumbs up.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Fratim Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John and Andrew, for being here.
Yes, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
You don't need to stay for the rest.
Mayor Gilman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go away.
Okay.
Feel better.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. Nope, get some rest.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Alright. Thank you very much. That was really great. Onto number 11, climate-related expenditure report and progress report on citywide facilities electrification program with ClimatTech.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Ms. Palmer, again, is going to remain up here and start things off. But we, as you do, as you have indicated, we do have two representatives also here from ClimatTech that will be giving a presentation. So Ms. Palmer, how do you want to proceed?
So maybe I'll just give a, a brief overview of what we have done so far, and then turn it over to ClimatTech to talk about what we're going to be doing.
Great, thanks.
How about that? Okay. So we've heard it several times from the city council that you wanted an expenditure report on how we have spent, how much money we have spent on projects, climate-related. So we've got some, we've got some tables in your, in your packet there. So we really sorta got started on, on being proactive on making some, some changes last fiscal year, so '24, '25. So at the end of the calendar year, so about a year ago now, we, we started replacing all of our gas HVAC units, not HVAC, water heaters, and what we could do, we called it the low-hanging fruit. What we could do, what we could do quickly, what we could, we had a couple of rebates that we were able to use by the end of last calendar year. So bought some vehicles, some EV vehicles. So last '24, '25, I think we spent about half a million dollars on, on climate-related improvements. So after, after that happened, we, the city manager and I had a conversation, and we knew that the direction was to do a more, a global assessment and look at all of the city facilities and come up with some sort of long-term strategies on converting, et cetera. So we went out to an RFP. We ended up hiring or hiring ClimatTech last June, I think, June of '25, to put together a long-term strategic plan for us. So Public Works staff and others have been working very closely with ClimatTech over the last six months and have done assessments, building assessments, and gone out on-site to look at all of our city facilities. And they are coming up with some, some plans for us. So we've spent, in this current fiscal year, about 170,000. So we've spent probably almost 700,000 in the last two years, oh, really, in the last year and a half on climate-related improvements. So I would turn this over to ClimatTech at this point. They have a slide presentation for you and can talk about what they're, what they're doing moving forward.
Thank you. Welcome.
If it's helpful, we have some printouts of the presentation.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor Gilman, members of council, city manager Harvey, members of staff and the community. Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to share a preliminary view of the citywide energy modernization program. So the goals of this program are all about energy and modernizing equipment that's past useful life and inefficient, electrifying any gas and equipment that uses fossil fuels. And then through these improvements, reducing greenhouse emission and overall decarbonization. And then also, a large piece of the project is leveraging any grant opportunities that are available to you and putting together a program that essentially pays for itself. Lindy kinda gave a little snapshot of the process to date and where we've been. So in June of '25, this past year, we were selected through a competitive RFP process in which the city solicited the services of a design-build energy service provider. And since then, we've been working, as Lindy mentioned, closely with staff and preparing a preliminary scope of work. And we were able to evaluate current utility consumption. We assess citywide infrastructure needs. And then we put together a feasible scope of work that we are going to share with you tonight.
So a little bit about our program, it's, it's covering four main areas. First, focusing on your heating and cooling equipment, which includes electrification of gas-consuming equipment, any HVAC units that are past their useful life or in need of replacement or inefficient. Adding air conditioning to the Martin Gym where you currently don't have cooling. And then in term, usually, these measures are coupled with a building automation system. But the city has already invested in a smart building automation system, and that has a lot of useful life left in it. So this would just be getting all of the new equipment connected to your existing system. As for lighting, the city has a mixture of older-generation inefficient fluorescent lighting throughout the city. You may have heard that there's new Title 24 requirements that's basically banning all fluorescent lighting in California. So not only is it inefficient, but the cost to replace these fixtures has just gone through the roof because you can't get fluorescent fixtures anymore. So this would be standardizing on LED throughout the city. You've done some LED here and there, but this would just be standardizing on it throughout for the interior and exterior. And sports, sports lighting at the Sarasotti Park. And then we're required by Title 24 integrating occupancy sensors and, and dimming sensors as well. In terms of building envelope, usually, building envelope is not what you would consider a lower-hanging fruit. Our, our scope of work is really focused on measures that can pay for themselves through energy savings and grants. But we do think that there are some improvements such as, you know, rather than replacing an entire window, there's film that you can use that really reduces the amount of heat transfer that comes in. And some lower-cost measures like that that might actually make sense in this program, but we need to do some further evaluation. And then for renewables, it's kind of a mixture of what you see here. So orange throughout all of this, I just wanna explain, is everything that the city has already done. So you've really made, as Lindy shared, a lot of great progress on your goals in these infrastructure areas. What's in green is what would make sense for us to potentially include in this program. You know, at the sites that it makes the most sense because of where the solar can fully provide a cost-savings benefit to pay for some of these other measures. And where you're going to maximize the federal incentives that are currently available before they expire. At other sites, it's not to say that you couldn't do solar, but it would really just be more of a, a having solar for, you know, a long, long way in the future, kind of hedging against utility rates well into the future. Not necessarily a full return on investment in the near future. So we've selected at the sites where we think it's really gonna provide a strong return on investment for you. And then at the sites that you see in blue, that's where you have some various programs that city, and city staff and our engineers are working together to take advantage of assessments from the Clean Power Alliance that's offering resilience and energy generation. At, at sites, they had to do an evaluation, but some of these sites where it doesn't make sense for the federal incentives, it maybe is a good fit for that program. So that's what you see in blue. And that might also include other work that the city does on its own. But we're waiting for them to do their assessment. Before we step foot on-site, and we're gonna share some pictures of some of the existing conditions, our first step is to really do a deep dive on what you're currently spending. Every meter throughout the city for energy, gas, and water. And then also comparing that to what efficient baselines are in this climate, or from your neighbors. Also, what rate structures you're on. And then we wanna see the impact of what rate increases have done and what they're gonna do. Over the last five years, your electric rates have increased 73%. And those type of annual double-digit rate increases are expected to continue for the foreseeable future. So it's not about just saving today. It's really hedging against that impact of rising utility costs and getting ahead of it so that you can keep those dollars in your facilities rather than paying them to Edison. So the next few slides give you an overview of some of the existing conditions. These are just a sample. They're not all, all the infrastructure. These are just a sample. They're not all, all the infrastructure that we're, that we're looking at. But it just gives you a sample of some of the existing conditions for, for HVAC lighting and other elements. And I just want to, you know, Lindy and her, and her team and staff have done a really good job of keeping older buildings and older infrastructure running, you know, in, in great, you know, condition. Even though it's, you know, in some cases like 25 or even older and well past its useful life. So they've done a really good job. This is just about kind of like getting rid of the gas-consuming equipment and updating to more modern standards for efficiency. Kent Hall, a number of units. Sarrazati Campus, you see up in the upper left hand, in the gym, they just have heaters installed in there. And so it's good in the winter, but with the growing number of hot days, you know, cooling would be really nice for the, for the building occupants to have in there. This gives you, this is a good snapshot to kind of show you just a mixture of different lighting temperatures and types of efficiency. These older generation lights that you have throughout the city really can see the difference in the crew building. Some of the exterior lighting, can't always tell when you're looking at it if something's LED or not. But you'll definitely be able to tell the difference afterwards in terms of just the quality of the consistent light temperature throughout. More of Libby Park. Sarrazati Park is, you know, there's interior and exterior lighting proposed for the Sarrazati Campus. And then Sarrazati Park also sports lighting, which is a different type of category of lighting fixtures. And those would be, would benefit from an LED upgrade. Also control, the controls upgrade too, associated with that. So this is an overview of a preliminary scope of work. I want to emphasize preliminary. Our job was just to, like Lindy said, assess your infrastructure needs in these areas. And then do a feasibility of what's a potential scope of work that can be procured under the government statute that our company ClimatTech operates under. And specifically that statute is called Government Code 4217. And any projects that we do as the design-build-implementer, it's required that the savings generated by those improvements pay for the cost of the turnkey program. So it's not to say that there's not other measures that, you know, you will want to pursue in the future, but those would be through a separate procurement. Or through some of these, you know, no-cost programs that are being offered by, by CPA. So this summarizes it. So our job tonight is, is really just to answer questions. And this is a check-in point to see if we're going in the right direction. We've had great collaborations with staff, but this is a kind of the part in the process. Before we invest, we're doing the assessment for all of this and the development of this at our risk. And, you know, based on how, what projects you decide to implement, we charge a fee on the turnkey design-build program. So up to this point, we're doing it at our risk and we will continue to do it at our risk for the finalizing the development of this. But before we do it, we just want to make sure we're not biting off more than you're wanting to, you know, take, take, take care of right now. So this is the, the categories. It's, and it's also summarized in that matrix in your, in your pocket. In terms of the funding plan, I mentioned it's, it's just, it's preliminary at this stage. So we don't have a final not-to-exceed pricing on your program. What we do know is how much can qualify under that 4217 procurement? And we think it's probably in the range of about two and a half to three million is going to be your cap of what kind of program you can do under this type of program. So the idea is, once we've determined what the scope of work is, we're going to do the detailed engineering that's required to give you not-to-exceed pricing. That's budget certainty without risk of change orders, but also timeline certainty. We're going to get all of the lead times on all the equipment. We're going to provide an assurance that you're going to meet the Inflation Reduction Act deadlines that are coming up in July to get the incentives that you're eligible for. We're going to give you a, you know, a ti, a window of time and, you know, under promise and over deliver on that in terms of, you know, we think we can get it done in 12 to 18 months. And then if there's any unforeseen conditions or things that go longer and costs go up, that the, the responsibility of that is on us. That's how these contracts work so that the city is not held responsible for change orders or delays, basically is how it works. So obviously we would leverage any and all federal and state incentives. And there's a lot of local programs too that we're evaluating. And then make sure that the savings is actually coming to fruition, monitor that. You know, the performance of the solar is really important. Not all solar is created equal, so having a performance guarantee on the solar. Those are all kind of the components of it. And when we put that, when we finalize that and put it together, is when we can give you a really more detailed look at the price and savings at whatever level you want to see it, basically. Environmental benefits from implementing the program. If we were to do the full amount of scope that we reviewed as a preliminary tonight, in, it's about 7.1 million pounds of green, of CO2 reductions associated with that over the life of the new equipment. So it's, it's very significant, very much aligned with your goals for decarbonization. And with, with, you know, the electrification, I, I would, I would think that some of these are probably even understated. It's just based off what the EPA estimates are. But with gas going up and energy rates going up, we think that it probably could even be a lot more. A part of our expertise is not only implementing the program and helping you to get the funding, but also helping you to communicate what you're doing and engage in your community. A lot of these are, you know, other than solar and lighting, some of this stuff is stuff that people don't see. You know, it's HVAC units and electrification of stuff that people aren't really seeing. So it's, it's helpful to have before and after pictures on a dedicated micro website or before and after pictures that you can share in your local, you know, publication or however you want to share it. We have a team that that's what they specialize in, is helping cities to share their stories in these area. It also is really helpful for getting potentially, you know, there's various awards, green energy awards and green standard awards that you can qualify for as a city or a community. And having a way to share your story is the first step in being able to qualify for some of those. A little bit of kind of where would we go from here? So after receiving your feedback tonight, our next step would be to work with staff to finalize a scope and funding plan. As we shared back on this, in terms of like federal, in-state grants, we, we anticipate there's, it's probably about maybe a fourth to a third of the program is out, there's grants that we can identify that can be paid, can pay for the program. The rest is a matter of identifying funding to pay for construction today. And then you would pay yourself back through savings. Some cities, they use financing mechanisms. Some cities use their own capital and pay themselves back because the savings are accrued over the life of the equipment. But at a minimum, it looks like it's about 250,000 from your CPA grant already for the electrification that this would help you to check the box on that. And we met with them and already confirmed that the equipment we would be recommending qualifies for that. And the other one is the federal Inflation Reduction Act incentives. And so that's one that we're going to need to get at least 5% of the program constructed for the renewable portion before July to, to be able to register for that. So that gives you a 30% rebate for any investments made, made in renewables. And the cool thing, this is a new development, is that Ojai is considered an energy center for Department of Energy standards. So you get a 10% bonus on top of that. And that is to incentivize this region to reduce its reliance on fossil fuels. And so you're not only getting the local programs from like CPA, but also a kicker, basically from, from that. So it's a 40% rebate that you would be getting back after it's implemented. So back to the timeline. So we would finalize kind of what that funding plan looks like. There's a whole legal and due diligence review that we would be, I'm sure, working with Ms. Anderson on our agreement terms. And just, there's just a, a number of things that need to be done to get the due diligence review done. The soonest that this would be, not, and this might, it might be too soon for you guys, but the soonest that our engineers could have this done would probably be your last meeting in January. Maybe, you know, sometime in February is, is, is as quick as we could go. Once we mobilize on construction, you're looking at about 12 to 18 months to, to get it implemented. And then measuring the savings and complying with the grants is part of our turnkey service as well. So we'll stop there and there's a lot of information and answer any questions you have.
But what you're asking for tonight is to say, what, what you proposed, does that meet our vision of what we would like to see you be doing? And if, if we agree, then you're going to go off and come up with the plans that then would come to us?
Yeah. So basically you're, I don't even believe that there's an action item for this. So this really is just, we want to hear your feedback. We can even have a follow-up, you know, some type of ad hoc review or some, you know, other type of information that you'd like before determining. It's just in good faith, we're, we would be investing a lot of resources to go to the next step. And we just want to make sure, does this scope of work and this concept and this timeline align with your goals? Do you see any concerns? We'd kind of like to get those all out on the table now.
It sounds amazing to me, but I want to hear what you guys have to say. It sounds incredible.
So I, I have a question. In the scope, we've got three different solar parking structures. Where, where are those going to be located?
Yes, good question.
While you're looking, when you said Ojai is an energy hub that we would get another 10%, what determines that?
It is a, this, like the secondary study that was done on regions that have a higher reliance than other regions on fossil fuel. So Ojai and Santa Clarita Valley and a couple other regions, like in the north, like North LA, in North LA County and Ventura are on this map of qualifying. So it's like low income, low income areas qualify, but only very few areas in the state meet the threshold.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Please, yep, where the solar panels would be.
Solar panels are. So at Sarrazati Campus, and that would be coupled with, with battery storage. At Libby Bowl. And at Ojai Skate Park.
And, and they'd be essentially like what we have in the parking lot.
Parking structures, yeah. And so, you know, some, some other things, you know, Kent, Kent Hall would maybe be another area that, you know, is a good candidate, but just with the current, you know, situation with the parking lot, it just seems like it's a long ways away from not even being something that you consider. And then even the elevation of it, it might not be ideal. Another area that might be a good fit is like the police. But it's also a really small parking lot and they, we wouldn't want to put it on that terracotta roof. So most other places, we just have found that it's, the load is too small to make it work. It doesn't mean that maybe it couldn't work with something like the Clean Power Alliance where they're doing a site lease power purchase agreement. May, maybe for them it would make sense.
I see.
I, I have a concern that by the stroke of a pen, money goes away. And I'm, I don't want to say too much more about that.
You mean like federally?
Yeah, that, that funding just poof, goes away. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, get, get a proposed work plan as quickly as is practical for your organization. You mentioned like January. Is that's, that's your, is that the fastest practical?
I think definitely the January 27th. I mean, I just think with the holidays, it really depends on cooperation of contractors. Because part of our detailed assessment is actually walking all of the trades, right? For, for this, during the holidays, you're not always going to get the availability of everybody that you need. We will do our, do our best. I think that you guys are, this scope of work is pretty straightforward compared to sometimes we're doing work that's water and wastewater and complete redesign of mechanical systems that just takes a long time for us to get our arms fully around. This is pretty cookie cutter for our world. So I'm hopeful that we can move quick, as quick as possible, but I don't want to promise anything.
Okay.
Okay. No, that's you. Thanks.
I, I, I guess I'd like to see, well, we, I, we should take comment.
There's no, I don't have any public comments for this.
Oh, okay.
Maybe online?
Yes, Mayor, we have one raised hand for Steve Colome. Thanks.
Hi, Steve.
Steve, you have the opportunity to speak now.
Had, had to unmute here. I, I made some written comments and, and I would turn your attention to those, but I won't repeat any of them. I do want to say that this team at ClimatTech and the company are experts in energy efficiency. They are a subsidiary of Bosch, which is an international company that does this really across the world. My concern is that we need to move more expeditiously. And my, I, I've, I'm going to say this frankly, progress to date has been slow. Over two and a half years ago, inefficient and potentially unsafe status was identified for the HVAC systems in city buildings. A year and a half ago, the council, you, you, your council approved for fiscal year 24, 25, $347,000 for the needed HVAC improvements. Clean Power Alliance gave another 250. So there were, as of June 2024, there was $600,000 available that could have been put immediately to an RFP, to firms that do this kind of thing to replace especially the, the rest of the low-hanging fruit. In the, in the status report, there was only 40,000 of the 600,000 available that was spent. Now, the reason for urgency was hinted at. The, much of what we're looking at that make this really attractive rely on Inflation Reduction Act and federal money that has flowed through to some of the, of the organizations, semi-public and public organizations that provide these funds. The Inflation Reduction Act money, which for homeowners ends this December, extends into next year. But if we don't meet those deadlines, we lose that opportunity. And given the administration in Washington, I'm not confident that that money isn't going to be clawed back. So I really would like to leave you with a sense of urgency to move this forward as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, I, so just on that one point, I was in the audience and I remember when that came up for the prior council, but I also recall that it was severely underfunded when we had to look at the infrastructure that was also needed. So that's only part of the story, right? If my memory is serving me correctly.
Yeah, I think what he's referring to is the 347,000 on the Phil White letter.
Right.
And, and after staff looked at that.
It turned out to be more like a million.
Agreed. It was grossly underfunded for those improvements.
And, and beyond that, I think what we wanted, we wanted, we wanted a comprehensive effort led by somebody who wasn't expert, who could be the firm, looking for all the opportunities to, to do it in a more holistic manner. We deliberately parked the money from CPA after getting guarantees from them that it would still be available because we knew if we took that comprehensive effort, we could throw that towards it.
So that, that kind of explains it. Not to hash these little minutia, but more like to say, my, I would not have the perspective that it's been very slow. It seems more like it's been prudent. That doesn't change what we're asking of you, which is to be as quick as you could be. I, I favor that 100%.
Okay.
So.
On this, on the point of the CPA funds, Mr. Harvey, we did speak with them today and confirm you have three years. And so we will make sure for that. And then on the Inflation Reduction Act, yes, we will do what we can. And I just want to mention, we as a company, because of having the backing of a company like Bosch, we're able to make decisions about how we are going to prepare for this July deadline and, and projects that we know that are pending. We're going ahead at our risk and ordering panels because panels were three to four month lead time back six months ago. And now they're like six to seven month lead time. So just to get ahead of that, we, we're making that strategic investment. And we do have City of Ojai on the list of a potential city that would benefit from that and had you, if you move forward.
Can I put a motion on the table to move forward with the work plan as expeditiously as possible?
I second that.
Yeah. I just want to make a couple of comments. I won't say much more than what Mr. Colome said, that I'm really pleased with. I won't say much more than what Mr. Colome said, that I'm really pleased with city manager, public works director, and bringing climate tech. Feel really strongly, we're in, we're in good hands for this pretty substantial project. And I'm also um, very, you know, kind of committed to the idea because of everything that I've read that, you know, s- switch over towards electrification. It isn't just a clean planet thing, it it's a smart, um, you know, if we're operating as a business, we should be looking at innovations like this because over the long term, it's going to save the city a lot of money. And um, and so I feel good about having that dual benefit. And so, um, you know, how however, however long it got, took us to get to this place, uh, I am so pleased that we are at this place. And um, and thank you for helping us.
Sure, thank you.
Ditto on that a hundred percent.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion.
And a second?
I seconded.
Thank you. To move forward with the received work plan expeditiously. Roll call, Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule is absent. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Wonderful. Yes, thanks, wonderful. We can get through these last two, you guys, we could do it, we could do it. Two more? Um, well, the the last one is really super short.
Oh, yeah, and this one's short too.
These will both be really short.
Okay.
Really short.
We're on the purchase of the new custom-built dais for city council.
Right, and uh we are going to bring forward Mr. Han to uh explain briefly how we.
Thank you, Ms. Bumair. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Uh, how we followed up on uh council direction.
Yep.
Mr. Han, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Han.
Hello. Um, what you, we have before you to consider tonight is the revised design and estimate for the new city council dais. Um, as you can see on the screen, I went, I took your um input, went back to the manufacturer, and this is what we came up. It is a horseshoe shape, it's still going to have all the um provisions for supporting the transition to a paperless ajitta. Um, one thing I didn't talk about previously that I think is actually pretty cool with this is it is um structurally supported and will be on casters, which means that if we have a special meeting like another ch- ch- clock, I can never pronounce that. We can actually move it and use this room differently.
Okay.
Um, so I really appreciate your guys' input on this. I think we came up with a much better design.
Cool. It looks like exactly what we were asking for, to me.
For understanding, so like from your side back, is that the same, is that like four feet?
So this, I I forgot to say, it's very similar in dimensions. We're going to lose about an inch and a half on either side of the room. So it's gotta be about this much wider.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna, the end of it will be about eighteen inches in more into the room because of the circle. Um, where the city manager and I are sitting will be the end of the circular part. And then there'll be two more seats that are straight.
I love it.
So no chance of moving back into the air?
So, so.
No chance.
Yeah, I I I've been working, doing city council meetings for a very long time. What you may not realize is every time we had a meeting over there, we had to set up chairs outside because there was too many people in the room. Um, we can accommodate, at before the pandemic, we could get almost forty people. It was like thirty-six to thirty-eight, depending on the chairs in the room. After the pandemic, it went down to about thirty.
Well, but also, Mr. Han, it's an ADA issue as well. And so the the bathrooms here are ADA compliant. We have the, I'm going to use the wrong term, but what's the term for the hearing impaired that is on the monitors?
We have a hearing loop in this room.
Right, right, the hearing loop.
We also have on those back monitors, if you've ever noticed, they have closed captioning live during the meeting.
No, 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 it's it's.
Now, this is the fire terminology, but I'm going to use it. I think there was also an issue of defensible space. Because we did have a couple of episodes, uh scary.
Ah, yeah.
Times at the dais and and uh. Trina Newman thought that this would be a.
I remember.
A more secure um way to manage.
Right.
It's really clear with with the with the exit points here, it's really very.
And and we did replace all the decking out there, so it's actually safe to run out now.
Could we get a lighting setup for, no. Stage lighting?
But all kidding aside, you know, these are the types of improvements that will be made as part of what we just last heard.
Right. Well, I appreciate the way you did, and to me, it's it's great. I would love to accept it and make that motion to approve uh the new design.
So I'm I'm going to make a comment.
Sure.
And I and I'm not going to stall out what we're doing. But I would, I would have loved to have seen us work with somebody right here in Ojai. But uh at least someone from California and maybe not someone from Texas. But that, those are my comments.
Okay.
Is my ear for a second failing me tonight?
Not, it hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more comments?
Okay. Roll call, Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule is absent.
Okay, thanks, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Han.
Do you want Mr. Han to stick around?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
With the the budget where the, you know, you said it's a fifty-two to pay for this.
That fifty-two-two to pay for the new um desk, it comes out of the budget. I was just curious, like, how do, how much money is in there? Like, is there a, is it substantial? I'm just curious.
I'd have to look at Fund Thirty-three, um, this is for.
Because that's the measure, Fund Thirty-three is.
It's an account that we have for um improvements uh for our facilities.
Okay.
Specifically, I think Fund Thirty-three uh is for Kent Hall and City Hall.
Okay.
But I could get you how much.
No, I I was just curious because I don't know what the, you know.
Mr. Han?
I actually, um.
Oh, he knows, of course.
I actually do have a plan for the budget.
Oh.
Um, we have um Channel Ten money, which is, um, this is essentially our studio.
Peg programming funding?
Yes. I have um twenty thousand dollars in there. We purch- we pre-purchased the um surfaces for you guys last year. So I'm going to convert the money that we were, had budgeted this year for that over because it's also Fund Thirty-three money.
Oh, great.
So I have a plan to cover the costs with.
Thank you.
Without changing the budget.
Awesome. Thanks, man. Appreciate it. That's ingenuity, man. All right, we're on the last item, um, thirteen.
Right, we'll be short and sweet on this, you you, um, okay.
I have an idea. Well, okay, the reason why I I'm going to be out of the country until the sixteenth. So originally we thought, well, what about thirteenth? But I just have a proposal, but I, maybe it's not possible. But right now, our first meeting would be, that would be our first meeting of the year, the next one would be the twenty-seventh. But just an idea, i- if we feel like there's a lot to do, if you guys were willing, would you be willing to do the twentieth and then the twenty-seventh? So it'd be two, it'd be, that, I'm just throwing it out there.
So I I have one other alternative.
Sure.
To that. And that would be that we go ahead and do the thirteenth. We make sure that the calendar, the agenda doesn't include anything that you have a strong desire to be a part of. And um but that we use it as an opportunity to.
Let Rachel do the meeting.
Well, I I mayor for a day.
Yes.
And I and I did talk to her about that, and she's, she likes the idea.
I have no problem with that. And if I, I mean, I'm going to have email and all that kind of stuff while I'm that, while I'm gone. But um I I'll be in a rural place in India, so it's not likely that I could zoom in. But we'll just, we'll stay together on the agenda, I'm totally cool with that.
I think.
If we.
Yeah, I think we can pick, I I'm, I I'll just ask the city manager. I'm I'm guessing that we have enough items.
More than enough, yes.
Uh, and I'm totally open to you uh say, you know, if something gets on the list and you'd prefer that be held.
Okay. No problem.
I'm fine with that.
Fine with me.
You guys, you guys can work together with the city manager and.
I'm a hundred percent cool with that.
Thinking it could just be one of those meetings where we go through things that don't need a whole lot of discussion. Business, I know, right?
You know, and 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 maybe even, you know, not be here till ten o'clock.
Sounds good to me.
The the, one of the reasons is too, that week of the twentieth is a, is a, is the California League of Cities.
Oh.
Conference and and I'll need to be up in Sacramento for the policy committee.
That answers that.
So.
Well, let's let's proceed that way.
On the twenty-second, or twenty-first rather, but the the twentieth, I I'll probably be flying up at that.
So like if, when I come back and you guys go, oh, there's a skate park on top of City Hall that you voted in or whatever.
So you'll understand, it'll be okay.
Yeah, all right. No, it sounds good to me.
So uh, do you need?
Nope.
Can I just make that motion or do you have enough detail?
Well, we would just need a motion if we were going to cancel it, but we're not canceling it.
Direction received.
Not at all. Nope, I'm totally fine.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's great. Cool, all right, sounds good. Really quickly, on council member reports, something that will be of interest to you guys. I did attend the MAC meeting last night and the that, and Supervisor Libby was there as well. Traffic came up, and so they are proposing a valley-wide traffic committee, which would have two MAC people on there, people from the community, possibly Chief Jenkins, two people from this body, or at least one. So I would like to bring that forward um at a future meeting that we could pick two people that would like to be on that. There's, nothing's been decided yet about when to meet and all that. But the idea is that it's kind of like what um Tina brought up earlier, which is they're looking at changes about traffic, um, how it affects us, how we can affect what's happening in the valley. So it's just trying to have a coherent valley-wide plan. I love the idea.
I I like the idea too, and and and, you know, I I guess we'd have to put it on for formal action. But I think we heard from the community member that Tina knows more about traffic than anybody in the valley.
For sure. No, it's something that we definitely, and Michelle, who's here, was there last night as well. Absolutely, one hundred percent, and we really should be a part of that.
Yeah.
And we will.
Okay, so two, two members are.
Two members are requested.
So, Mr. Montgomery.
Now, the first, just to, just so we have a timeline, the first meeting would not come back until the that last week in January. So we're not in a big rush. Um, we can, we can try to pick somebody at one of our meetings coming up forward. But they wouldn't report on anything most likely in until at least, the earliest would be end of January, if not late February. I mean, early February.
Should be a fairly quick item on the.
I would say so, just picking two of us, and we'll figure out what the scheduling will be with the supervisor. And then, um, oh, sorry, you got that?
As a routine item, we're going to bring forth our regional boards for the year on January twenty-seventh, and I can, we can, if it's reasonable to.
This might be before that.
Sounds like we, like, we'll, we'll try to fit this in.
Okay.
In December, I'm one of the, this will be a short item.
Yep, and then um just to get you hopefully a little excited, the student council meetings are going really, really well, super exciting. They have tons of photographs, but imagine like twenty teenagers in here talking about all the places that are really cool in Ojai. And what's becoming really clear is all the students at all the high schools want a place where they can all hang out together and get to know each other. So there's something coming possibly with OU SD. And then lastly, um, there is developments on the water adjudication, and I think we'll have more to talk about possibly at the next meeting. Cool, that's it for me. Anybody else on council member reports? Cool. Oh, yeah.
One thing, um, so I just wanted to say that I attended the the California Transit Association Conference last week. And got a lot of great information about different ways that we can uh support our clean energy uh initiatives here in in town. And also, I'm working with Gold Coast to um to see about uh perhaps uh making a donation of of the, a used uh uh shuttle bus for OU SD. But this is something that's like in the works and it wouldn't be for another eight months. But they're being very, very uh generous and responsive, and we have a great working relationship with them.
Wonderful. Yeah, okay. Any future agenda items that we need to add? Meeting adjourned.